All right, I call the order this regular scheduled meeting of the 34th City Council for October 22nd at 2024 at 7:00 PM. I ask everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phone or communication. There you go. Devices, right on cue, so as to not disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Inos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Elsawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here. We have a call. Okay, at this time, I would like to introduce Reverend Dr. Monica Ola to, from help is near ministry, ministry, right?
Yes, that's right.
It's kind of like a tongue.
Yes, it is.
As long as they write it out and the check right, you're good, right? All right, Doctor, you will be giving our invocation tonight, and everyone that is able to please stand for an invocation and remain standing if you can for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, continue to bless Dearborn Council for inviting you as headship. What an honor and privilege it is to stand before such wonderful leadership. As today comes to a close, and with only five hours remaining before the beginning of a brand-new day, we give thanks for your compassion and your grace. Father and Maker of everything, continue your hand of blessings upon this wonderful city, its officials, council body, mayor, and Dearborn citizens. Father, as City Council and our leaders work diligently for its citizens, please continue your watch care over their families during their absence. May tonight's agenda be met with your mighty hand of protection, patience, respect, and peace. May the concerns of Dearborn citizens continue to be guided by your wisdom and direction. And as always, may harmony and understanding towards one another be our guiding light, for we are better together. So let it be written, so let it be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doctor. All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have first item of business?
Item number four, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Elsawafi recognizing October 2024 as Michigan Library Appreciation Month, and encouraging all residents, community organizations, and public officials to join in celebrating the libraries in our state, their dedicated staff, and the countless ways in which libraries enrich our lives and contribute to the betterment of society, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Michigan Library Association, or MLA, annually designates the month of October as a statewide observance to celebrate the contributions of Michigan's public schools, academic, tribal, cooperative, and special libraries. The libraries play a vital role in fostering education, lifelong learning, and literacy for all people, people of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities, and the libraries play a significant role in promoting the right to access of information, enabling individuals to make informed decisions and engage in open discourse. It is resolved that the members of the 34th Dearborn City Council hereby recognize October 2024 as Michigan Library Appreciation Month. During this time, we encourage all residents, community organizations, and public officials to join in in celebrating the libraries in our state, our city, their dedicated staff, and the countless ways in which libraries enrich our lives and contribute to the betterment of society. Be it further, that this resolution be given immediate effect. And I believe we have Library Director Betty Adams here, if you'd like to say a few words regarding this item.
Thank you very much, Council Betty Adams, Library Director, and thank you, guys, for recognizing October as Library Appreciation Month in the state of Michigan. It's an essential, on my office door, it says, "Libraries are essential public spaces," and I could not agree with that statement more. And every day that I get to serve this community and this role, it's an honor, and I appreciate your recognition of the library and all that we do for the community. We just tallied all of the programs that we've done in the last year, and it is just under 500 programs for the community.
That's excellent.
And all of the library programming and resources are free to the community, so we genuinely appreciate you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, any objection to unanimous roll? Hearing and seeing a unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item five, resolution by Councilmembers Hamud and Herrick proclaiming October 20th through the 26th, 2024, as Friends of Libraries Week in Dearborn, and urging everyone to support their friends of the library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Friends of the Dearborn Public Library raises money that enables our libraries to move from good to being great. They help provide a resource, I'm sorry, they help to provide the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for summer reading challenges, staff training, and special events throughout the year. The work of the Friends highlights an ongoing, on an ongoing basis, the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in, in the joy of lifelong learning and connecting with the thoughts and ideas of others from, from the ages of past and the present. Let it be resolved that the members of the 34th Dearborn City Council proclaim October 20th through 26th of 2024 as the Friends of Libraries Week in the city of Dearborn, Michigan, and urges everyone to support the Friends of the Library and thank them for all that they, all that they do and make our library, the community, so much better. This resolution shall also be given immediate effect. Is there anyone here from the organization? Okay, just wanted to make sure, I know this is a companion piece. Any questions or comments for my colleagues? All right, any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item six, resolution by Councilmembers Elsawafi and Herrick proclaiming the city of Dearborn as a Purple Heart City, and encourage its citizens to show their appreciation for the sacrifices that Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage, and show them the honor and support that they have earned, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The city of Dearborn has always supported its military veteran population. The Purple Heart is the first American Service Award or decoration made available to common soldiers and specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declaration, with a declared enemy of the United States of America. The city of Dearborn honors the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believes it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and give them the support that they have earned. It is requested that the city of Dearborn proclaim itself as a Purple Heart City and encourage the citizens of the city of Dearborn to show their appreciation for the sacrifices of the recipients, that the recipients have made in defending our freedoms and to acknowledge their courage and to show them the honor and support that they have earned with immediate effect. And I know that our public relations, Director Phillips, and there is some people here from the installation that would speak. Who's going to be speaking? Commander? Yes, if you'd like to step forward and just state your name and rank. Now, we might as well get that.
My name is Ron Allen. I am the Department Commander of State of Michigan for the Military Order of the Purple Heart. I'll give a little bit of history on the Purple Heart, and then after that, I'll have the mayor come down, and I will present the flag to the mayor and have the City Council join in on it.
Thank you.
A little over 200 years ago, General George Washington created the Military Merit in 1782. Really, the first Purple Heart was a piece of ribbon trimmed in white. And since then, as General George Washington created the Purple Heart Medal, according to the National Purple Heart Hall of Honor, more than 18, 1.8 million Purple Hearts have been presented to the members, service members, who was created in 1782. This was just an estimate. It stopped after World War II. Then we had Korea, Vietnam, what's going on in the Middle East and everything else. Right now, the estimate is over 2.1 million Purple Hearts have been awarded. Thanks to General Douglas MacArthur, the Purple Heart received its modern-day look in 1932. He took it to Congress, and he presented the medal to Congress. The medal that he presented to Congress is the same medal that is awarded today to our Purple Heart recipients. Famous people who are, were just average citizens before they pursued their careers, excuse me, actors, James R. Ness, Charles Bronson, writer Oliver Stone, made the movie Platoon, athletes, Pat Tillman, Rocky Blair. In the history of our country, there's only been one president of the United States of America who has been awarded the Purple Heart, and he was the commander of the famous PT-109. John F. Kennedy is the only president in the United States to receive a Purple Heart. The first woman to receive a Purple Heart was Army Lieutenant Anne G. Fox. She was chief head nurse at Hickam Field in Hawaii when the Japanese attacked Pearl Harbor in 1941. By your city becoming a Purple Heart city, it shows that they appreciate the sacrifices Purple Heart recipients did in defending our freedom, thanking the men and women for their courage, honor, bravery, and the ultimate price paid, and the support you show to their families. August 7th is National Purple Heart Day. It was passed by Congress and the Presidents of the United States. Last is all, some gave all, and all gave some. So at this time, Mayor, if you'd join me in front, please?
I think he wants him first. I think he wants him alone, yeah.
Dearborn, this will be your new flag for your city. [applause]
Commander, thank you.
A little bit more, I'm done.
Oh, you got a little bit more?
Yeah, just a little bit more.
All right. Commander, I know you have some more to finish.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. What is the history of the Purple Heart Trail? The Purple Heart Trail was established in 1992 by the Military Order of the Purple Heart. The original idea for the Purple Heart Trail came from Patriot Frank Coon Jr., a member of the Chapter 1732 in Virginia. His idea was carried to the national level by Patriot George Gallagher, a member of the Virginia Chapter 353. Patriot Gallagher was a former National Adjutant. Patriot Gallagher introduced Patriot Coon's Purple Heart Trail ideas as a resolution during the 1992 MLPH National Convention held in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. The resolution approved, was approved, and the Military Order of Purple Heart Trail began. The Purple Heart Trail originates as the monument of Mount Vernon, where General George Washington has been laid to rest. This monument marks the original, the origin of the Purple Heart Trail. What is the Purple Heart Trail? The Purple Heart, the purpose of the Purple Heart Trail is to create a symbolic and honorary system of roads, highways, bridges, and monuments that give tribute to the men and women who have been awarded the Purple Heart Medal. The Purple Heart Trail accomplishes this honorary goal by creating a visual reminder to those who use the road, road system, and others have paid a high price for their freedom in travel and live in a free society. Signs placed at various locations inundate the roads, the highways, highway where legislation has passed and designated parts of the national roads system as a Purple Heart Trail. The actual format and the design of the signs vary from state to state. They are currently designated sections in 45 states, as well as one. By becoming the Purple Heart City, and now you're on the honor roll, Mayor, your city will be put, sent to my adjutant, he will send it to national, they will place the city of Dearborn on the honor rolls, and you will never come off it. You'll be on there permanently. Congratulations to you, Mayor, and the City Council, and to everybody else here.
Thank you, Commander. Thank you, Commander. Absolutely, yes.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor. My name is Frank Montoya. I am the Commander of the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council, and on behalf of our member organizations, I would like to thank everyone here, Mayor, City Council, all of the city dignitaries, for your support in our various veteran activities throughout the year, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, things like that. We have Veterans Day coming up as well. I would like to be able to work with everyone here to strengthen our bonds with the city and the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council. Piggybacking on Commander Allen's message, my dad was a two-time winner, award recipient of the Purple Heart in Korea. And I, along with my wife, who is the commander of the American Legion Post 364 in Dearborn, we want to work with the city together as one to make sure that we strengthen our bonds with the city when we have veteran events and organizations. You guys have resources, we have resources, we'd like to work together. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan Ture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely, sir.
My name is Mike Hakus. I am the Commander of the Dearborn Romanowski Post, DFW 6896, and I just want to extend the pride that my post shares with you this day. I have many Purple Heart recipients in my post. I'd also like to add that my close personal friend, who just passed away, George Cassar, our grand marshal of the parade, was a two-time Purple Heart veteran, and I'm sure if he was with us here today, he would be equally as proud. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
[applause]
All right, any other questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Ms. Clerk, next item.
Next item is item seven, public comment. We can begin that at 7:21.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk, 7:21. Again, council rules were enacted this term that now allows 30 minutes prior to our, for public comment, prior to our business items to better serve our residents. Kind reminder, there is a three-minute limitation, which the clerk will give you a warning when there's about 30 seconds left. There is comment cards on either side that you can fill out. I have some here, I'll call them in that order, and then after that, we will then see if anyone else would like to address it. Remember, there is another public comment item at the public comment portion, excuse me, unlimited, at the end of the meeting, and any item that's on the agenda, we ask that you wait until that agenda item, or we will put that forward for you on the agenda item. Okay, first, we have Ms. Fegorasi. Maria?
Yeah, good evening. I'm Maria Fegorasi. I am from Long Boulevard. I spoke two weeks ago about the historic district ordinance. First thing I'm going to do is get away from the word district. We have spoken with the State Historic Preservation Office, and that word seems to alien everybody. We have found out that in Detroit, they refer to this ordinance as historic designation ordinance, so let's just call it a historic ordinance and maybe work with our legal team to see what we can do and move forward. But the reason why I came tonight is because I know that a lot of you went to see the Hollingsworth Building, that great big gorgeous called the largest and finest furniture warehouse in America when it was built, and my point tonight is that I know Hollingsworth has a lot of plans they're going to present tomorrow, but they do not qualify. That building by itself, I had said two weeks ago, you can also get a single building designation for a historic district, and it's clear that that building, as large and gorgeous and the Albert Kahn designation as it is, would qualify for a single historic district, and then they would qualify for state and historic tax credits. I'm not going to say that they would be more than what's planned tomorrow night, but I just want to give that as an example, because everybody always says updating this ordinance clashes with personal property rights, and there is not any way on earth that making these grants available to Hollingsworth for this building clashes with personal property rights. So I just would like you to remember that tomorrow when they present their case, that we don't have the ordinance in place, and so buildings like that cannot apply for these tax credits. So it's not just districts that we're talking about, it's more than that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. All right, and next we have Mr. Okray.
We all want to see democracy in action if that's not happening. Members of the City Council, you've had the historic ordinance before you for five years, and I'd like to make three points. Number one, your updating the ordinance would not create any historic district. I recognize that it's not easy to make controversial decisions. I hate making decisions that are going to upset a portion of any venue with whom I am dealing. However, I want to emphasize the following second point, and that, I think, will get you off the hook. Should you update the historic ordinance, I'm sure that you would have a vote by the residents in a neighborhood as to whether they want to have the historic designation. Then, of course, you would simply affirm the will of the people. I hate to use this term, but in effect, act as a rubber stamp. And this is my third point. I have heard members of the Council state that they don't want to any entity to force its will on the people, yet democracy is all about accepting the will of the majority. In the past three years, the Meyer area has lost two-century-old homes. On Morley, we lost the Wagner House, whose family owned the Wagner Hotel and the Wagner Brickyard, a major employer in the 1800s. In the last year, we lost the Lathers Cordy House on Garrison, turned down and replaced with a sign that says, "Well Built to Suit." Further, perhaps more, most tragically to some, we lost the home of the last Detroit Lions coach to lead a championship team in 1957, the home of George Wilson on Garrison, whose exterior was changed beyond recognition. The Museum Guild of Dearborn is coming out with a book on the aviation subdivision. 7930 Oakman is a very important address. I want the aviation subdivision to act, create a historic neighborhood, so that 7930 can be saved. I want to preserve that home so that people can see where the first Dearborn Arab-American Councilperson lived.
You have 30 seconds.
Where the mother of the first Arab-American Council president lived. I'm 82 years old, I will not see many more five-year milestones. Please update the historic ordinance. I want to see it pass before I pass. See us to history.
Thank you, Mr. Okray. All right. Okay, Mr. Benzick, John Benzick.
My walking has gotten bad because I permanently suffer now from this Agent Orange. I just wanted to, with my fellow veterans, friends, and I'm the commander of the Catholic War Veterans 1540 for a number of years, and this is going to be the last City Council meeting, right now, until voting, which is the 5th of November, Tuesday. And there's been a lot of controversy about voting in Dearborn and all the shenanigans that have been going on politically and related to the wars, both in the Middle East, in the Russian-Ukrainian war. And I ask my citizens, particularly in the East Side, you know, we were all overseas. I got to vote overseas in 1968. You had to be 21 years of age, so not many of the veterans voted during the Vietnam War. Unfortunately, I was drafted out of Bowling Green State University and was in four major units, permanently signed, but I did vote. It was, and it was a wonderful, I got a picture of me with the Nationals holding up my ballot. I beg everybody in the city of Dearborn to get out and vote Tuesday, November the 5th. Newsmax last night had an article, a presentation of the city of Dearborn, and how it fell in the voting aspect of it 2:30 in the morning. I saw it live. I'm not going to give the details out. It even mentioned our mayor. This is very important for me, because I went to high school, and John F. Kennedy was my president all four years when I was in high school. And it was nice, Ron Allen mentioned that he was a president, received the Purple Heart. Ron told me, he was explaining his situation to his Purple Heart aspect of it, he was a tunnel rat overseas. Well, I had a dear friend who was a tunnel rat in the infantry. I was infantry-trained. I was good at everything. I was an expert in everything. And these days, now, going to be 80 years of age, and I see what's going on in television just makes me sick to my stomach. I just wish, I support the mayor and all of his endeavor he's doing with the city of Dearborn, handling a very sensitive subject matter related to us veterans, the presentations and the rallies, and things of this nature. We need to have the citizens of the city of Dearborn come out and vote, and I'd like to see the percentage in the East Side at least get up to 40%. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Benzick. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Thiel Moore.
Hello, Thiel Moore, 3804 Allen Street. I come to you today because of issue 21 being discussed today.
Oh, the one that's, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know this was a...
If I talk about now, I have to leave in like five minutes.
Yeah, if you have to leave, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Of course.
So what's being discussed here is a change of ordinance to make it harder for people to comply with notice of violations. The handbook for code enforcement officers talks about the concept of progressive enforcement, which is the idea of working with your community and trying to help them learn why the ordinances matter and actually fixing the problem at hand. This is not about slapping violations on people, it's not about punishments, it's about addressing the issue and making our city better. The proposed changes here make it more difficult for residents to deal with the notice of violation and actually rectify the problems at hand. Now, there are also discussions about the max fee that can be levied, which is, I think, up to $1,000. A study done last year found that 56% of Americans don't have $1,000 in savings. So if charge is fine, they would go in debt, maybe go bankrupt, something really bad would happen. So I want us to think about who is actually affected by this change. It's not the people who have a million-dollar house, it's the people who are, you know, single mothers who have two jobs, who can't just drop everything to fix their yard in five days. This change will affect people who don't have the money to pay a $1,000 fine to the city. And so I encourage you, while I understand there is an issue of our code enforcement officers having too much stuff to do and being too busy... of our code enforcement officers having too much stuff to do and being too busy, I encourage the city to think of ways that we can, uh, help code enforcement officers without making people potentially go into debt or bankruptcy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for, for your information, this is just the first reading?
Of course.
So there is going to be much more discussion on this, though. But we do appreciate your comments. Thank you so much.
Comments now, Matt?
Mayor, yeah, if you like.
Yeah, so just very broadly, uh, the, the traditional fee for like not mowing the lawn is about like sixty-five dollars. It's not a thousand. A thousand is when you get to something extremely egregious that's lingered probably for, you know, you're getting close to like a year or so. The point of this ordinance is that right now what happens is we issue NOV, and then the contractor that we send out to a major property doesn't know if you've resolved the issue or not. So what we do here is we allow the resident to just communicate back to us that the issue has been resolved, so the contractor doesn't have to be sent out.
Sure.
Um, so that's one feedback communication loop we're requesting. To your point about how do we assist families, we launched a front porch replacement program. These are some of the programs that we're beginning to launch that have never existed before. These are to assist individuals who don't have the means of paying for a replacement of steps or eliminating a, a rat issue because your front porch is collapsing. We're going to step in as a municipality and try to address the most egregious ones across the municipality. And so as our code enforcement officers are actually going across the city, we're actually documenting the houses we believe may need assistance. Um, and we're going back into our system to see, is this a, a home that's owned by the tenant or is it, is it a landlord situation? If it's a landlord situation, we try to hold the landlord accountable in the situation where the living conditions are subpar, and the fee gets assessed really on the, on the home, on the person who owns the property, not the tenant in that situation. Um, so this is not about making it more difficult. We're looking for ways to, you know, what we've seen is the same homes get the same NOVs every two weeks, every month. We really want to try to allow them to communicate back to us that they've resolved the issue as to not spending administrative time. So hopefully it, it does both, where we, we do offer these programs for residents, and we're able to communicate more strongly through code enforcement. And to your point, we don't have enough code enforcement to go out every single day to see thirty-five thousand homes and so, and top of the business districts, but we're doing our better job.
Sure. Can I add one more comment?
Yeah, of course.
Um, the only thing, I guess, if we're following in the, the thread of like we want to make sure this stuff gets rectified, uh, there's no real benefit to decreasing the time people have to resolve the issue other than trying to, uh, uh, at least I feel like we'd be trying to punish them.
It's a public health benefit. And so when you have, when you have situations where you have a rat issue because you're doing ground feeding of many animals, or in the back you're allowing, you know, you have a, you know, wood all over the place, your grass is growing to several feet tall, you've thrown furniture out in the backyard, these are some of the situations that we've seen, very egregious situations, it becomes a public health hazard. And that's why we're decreasing the time. It's not that this household would have accomplished it in ten, but not going to accomplish it in five. That's not what we found. Um, we found that this household has allowed this to fester for six months to a year and hasn't gone about the appropriate process, or the house has been abandoned. And that way, if, if the house is abandoned, we actually pursue a legal process which takes months, uh, to actually rectify resolve. So there is a public health hazard here for allowing things to linger for a fairly long time.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Again, this is the beginning of it too, so we have some more on it. Okay. Uh, Mr. Montoya, I think you had spoke. You got, okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Anthony Deegan?
Anthony Deegan, longtime Dearborn resident. Uh, I wrote these things down this time because I want to try to get as much as possible. I promise you, I'm going to try to be positive at the end of this. So, um, in the, in the previous city council meeting, divestment from Israel was discussed. I was curious as to the full nature of the divestment process. Is this divestment limited strictly to weapons manufacturing, or is it broader in scope? Can the council tell us what other companies they are considering divesting from? In any event, almost every other time divestment from Israel is discussed, whether it be groups protesting in Dearborn or any other group nationally or worldwide, the nature of divestment is punitive, a chastisement of Israel. As such, it feels disingenuous to act as though the purpose of this divestment is strictly on account of weapons manufacturing. Last meeting, I came here and offered a point of view that there are two sides to this conflict, a view which was dismissed outright. I'd like to offer further things to consider at a later time, but tonight I'd like to address some of the things that were mentioned at the most recent meeting that were not addressed. An audience speaker stated that the Glass Memorial honoring those who have served post nine eleven was wrong, that the city should take it down, and that it was a fake war on terror. Yet nine eleven was one of the most horrific terrorist attacks on America that we have ever seen, with three thousand dead and taking our economy to the brink of collapse. Many brave U.S. soldiers died fighting those who perpetrated nine eleven and their allies. Nothing about nine eleven or their deaths seems fake to me. Someone else stated that the events of October seventh were like someone breaking out of a concentration camp, an event that happened to some Holocaust survivors, no less. I think most concentration camp survivors would probably be looking for food or time with their family upon escaping a concentration camp. I think raping women, murdering families, and taking hostages is one of the last things that we associate with freedom. Another speaker characterized our largest taxpayer, Ford Motor Company, as Zionist. It seems that such comments should also elicit some type of response from the council or the mayor. I would also like to mention that the meeting, at the last meeting, the mayor stated that over eighty protests took place without a single arrest. While it may be true that not a single arrest was made, that does not mean that any laws were not broken. MCL two-five-seven-six-seven-six B, section two, states that a person without authority shall not block, obstruct, impede, or otherwise interfere with the normal flow of vehicular, streetcar, or pedestrian traffic upon a public street or highway in the state by means of barricade, object, or device, or with his or her person. Yet on Saturday, October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, hundreds of protesters poured onto Ford Road and marched for fifteen to twenty-five minutes from Fortson High School, all the way back to Ford Woods at Greenfield, blocking all four lanes of traffic.
You have thirty seconds?
I spoke with two police officers and asked why they weren't stopping it, and the impression was that their hands were tied and that one felt some type of exasperation. As we all know, Dearborn has some of the best police in the entire nation, and the community backs them. At many of these protests, people are chanting things like, "Intifada, intifada, from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free", and "Chaybar, chaybar, yeh yehood", some of the more marginal ones have even chanted "Death to America" at, at our war memorial. Now, I want to say, this is the positive part. I know that this is controversial. I would like a chance to say the positive thing. Now, I want to say that my purpose is not to bring these things up for negativity's sake. I pray for the mayor and the council that the Lord blesses, blesses the work of your hands.
No, I appreciate it, but I want you to understand, just like you had the time to speak, you made comments about others making comments. They have the right to do that. That's why we live in America. So the customer, the residents that you're speaking or non-residents that spoke, they have the right to do that. So I mean, that's the, that's nothing we can do about what they said.
Oh, no.
You know, you're asking for, and I think I, you sent an email that I responded to recently.
I did. Yeah.
So I just wanted, yeah, I apologize, but I did get back to it recently.
All right.
So regarding the, the question you had about as far as shifting, uh, funding that, that was on there. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Okay.
Okay, but as far as laws broken in the MCL you, you brought out, when someone has a petition or if there's a permit and the police are there, those laws are, are not broken because there's traffic control measures, and that's what we have, even when there's a parade for the high school. Because, you know, if you read what you read, that means that when the high school has a parade, they're in violation as well. They have a permit for that. So I just want to make sure you understand.
Uh, I thought the mayor said that no issues were, or no permits were issued.
No, there's a free speech, permits are, when, when there's notification, you don't have to get a permit. It's a free speech issue. So there's a lot of legalities to it. The point is, when the police are involved, when you see a police car with sirens and walking in front of it, that means they're not breaking the law.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure you understand.
Um, can I just, uh, share my experience? So my experience was that I, I did attend that rally, and it seemed that that was an impromptu thing, that they, they poured onto the streets and that the police then had, they, they just, they kind of had their hands tied. But it's, it's just the one thing that I'd say, I understand everybody has their free speech right, and you don't have to address it, but the fact is that, that my comments were addressed when people are saying things like, the, the nine eleven thing was a fake war on terror.
Okay, I, I know you've said that twice already. I was here, and I didn't, I didn't hear anybody say that something's a nine eleven fake. My brother's a decorated naval officer. So I, and been serving twenty-nine years. So I, I don't, I didn't hear anybody say that. And if somebody said that, unfortunately, they have the right to say that. We didn't say it. I didn't say it. So I can't sit here and say, who said, he said, he said, she said. That's fifth grade. We're here to run the government and do the job for the people and appropriate their taxes. So you have the right to speak, and I don't know anybody that came up to that podium and said that something that the, uh, nine eleven was fake.
They said it was a fake war on terror.
Okay, let's say they did. I'm not disagree, if someone, I don't remember hearing that, but let's say that happened. I can't stop someone from speaking on how they feel, just like you spoke how you feel. So I just want to make sure when you say some laws are broken, the laws are not broken, okay? So I just want to make sure you understand that.
And I do want to say, like, I, I hope the best for the city, and this is a great place to live, and I think that it, the, the point of why I'm saying what I'm saying on the positive note is that I do feel that things are becoming volatile and that the temperature in the room is increasing, and I think that it's important to, to try to decrease that temperature. And I think that it's a good place to live.
Decreasing the temperature, just so you understand, is people going out and be able to protest and voice their opinion when their family's homes are being blown up and people are dying. So that's the way they vent. That's how most people vent. They sign petitions. They come and say that they've been asking for things for five years and seven years. This is people's rights. So even though you might not like the way it happens, that's the way a lot of people do in this country, just like they did at the universities that stood and protested. That's, this country is founded on protests and making your voice heard. So we allow that to happen. That's the government allows that to happen.
Yeah, I don't think that the protests are a sign of increased temperature, just for the record.
I understand, I, I understand that you have a different opinion.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Oh, it's my, my pleasure. Thank you. All right, next, I think it's Jake, Jacoban? Jacoban? Yes.
Yes.
All right, sir, and then if you'd just like to come?
It's Jacoban.
Yeah, okay, I couldn't, I couldn't, uh...
My name is Yvonne Jacoban, and those that know me closer, they call me Nico.
Nico.
Okay, now I'll try to translate you my, uh, heroblich writing, which you asked help from the Mr. ...
Okay.
Okay, my, my problem is, it's a personal problem, and I came before you and knowing, and I, we heard the prayer to be, receive wisdom, and I know this is a place with wise people. And someone years ago, he taught me to bring my problems to the city council. My problem is that, uh, in the, uh, beginning of the summer, I discovered a sinkhole on my back property above the sewer, main sewer line. And, uh, the city, after about three or four months, they came and they fixed it, but they sent me a good bill of about three thousand dollars. And I discovered that my next-door neighbor had the same problem a year ago or so, and the city council approved for the, uh, solving the problem from the city's funds, so, for free. And I said, "I'm going to the city council to ask the approval for the same thing. And if, I'm sorry, I couldn't reach Mr. Mayor. I'm not so smart on handling..."
You're doing fine.
"...W-W-W invite the mayor. I'm not so, another way does not exist to talk to him. See, he's a young man. I'm a old man. Look at me. And the old people, they are not so good on, uh, on handling. And, uh, also, as you've seen, I'm not good either in, in writing."
Nico, I think the writing is excellent. So let me answer your question. So, uh, first of all, I was the one, uh, on the last council that offered that, where your resident didn't pay for it. What happened is there was tremendous amount of flooding. Remember the flooding we had?
Yes.
So a lot of the flooding caused sinkholes.
Yes.
The last, the last thirty-third council?
Yes, the last council.
Yeah.
Before, yeah, before this, four years ago, where you're, he's, I'm addressing your neighbor.
Yes.
So what happened is I offered that, and I got support from colleagues. Because what happens is, is a lot of people have connections, and I'm not a sewer expert, but I think I'm getting there.
Yes, you're right. Yes.
The sewer connects to the main.
Yes.
And a lot of them are made out of clay, and a lot of the water, because of the massive flooding, has caused breaks, and it was hard to determine if it was on our side or your side. But I want to explain something to you too, and I'd like to have the director come up, uh, Mr. Hawkins, too, because we do things here at the city that's much, Director Hawkins? Yeah, that are, it's much beneficial to the resident. For example, if you lived in some other city, you would have to fix it yourself. And I've seen some of these bills, Nico. Sometimes they're almost ten thousand dollars to just dig the hole.
Yes.
So the council...
Yes, I appreciate this.
I know, but I want you to understand what happened. So when they go out and they take pictures and cameras and they find that it's, it's broken on your side,
Yes.
we fix it, and they are capped, we, we order them not to charge you more than a certain amount.
They later, which informed me.
Right, so you know that it was much more, it was over ten or twelve thousand dollars.
Correct. But the problem is, since, see, like I said, I'm not so smart. You're Mr. Engineer Department.
This is the department, yeah, he's the department director.
Oh, good. The problem is, I had, when they fixed, uh, the problem, two, uh, construction workers and an inspector. When they reached the, my line, all three of them, they started, "Say, say, say, say", I said, "Stop. Let me convince myself." And now it's my time to convince you're a smart person, right? Everybody is smart and you know. The pipe, since it happens here and here and here, and the pressure, you are correct, the pressure on the pipe when was flood, created just a little push on the line and did open just a little bit. And my neighbors, some other people, because they were not just one, more than one, right?
There was, yeah, there were several, uh, probably thirty-five or so, right?
Okay, okay.
More than that, about fifty of them, right?
It pushed, and for him, and some of them, they make a bigger opening, and some, they do a smaller opening, like in a sack full of grain. If you have a big hole, it goes here fast from the...
Right.
And my pipe was a small hole, and I have the picture from your department.
Right, okay.
Was a small hole. And they say, yes, was, Mr. Mayor says, was three years ago. Sure, three years ago. But when it's a hole, plus, you'll see in my picture, was a tree, and we know, everybody knows, that the hills with trees, they're not washed away right away when the raining is coming. It's delayed. And I had a tree, and I have some pictures on my phone with the root. Uh, this is not for you, for them, to prove that I'm right. But now I have to have your approval that I'm right, plus something else. You said when it was rain, we know this spring we had a lot of rain too. And we didn't have the, uh, basement flooded. Between the level of the sewer and the level of the basement, it's about three or four feet, the difference. Last time when we had all the basement flooded, and I said, "Yes, we have to do this", was the water and the pumps on Michigan Avenue.
Yes.
They were not, one was the fact that we didn't open the gate for the Rouge River and so and so. But now we were fast when was, and we know we had excess of rain. Many times I've seen, we encounter flood warning, so and so, so and so.
Right.
And it was a delay in time, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Engineer, you are an engineer. This, uh, uh, was a delay and finishing the, and something else. You've seen the bushes. No, you remain.
So Nico, here's what we're going to do. Here's what we're going to do. So just so you understand, the flooding aspect that happened before, we had federal assistance for that flood.
Okay.
And that's why we asked to assist the people because, and we limited the timeframe for sinkholes to show up, to, to help our residents in time of need. What we're going to do now is we're going to have the director get the information from you. He's going to look into it. He can come out to the property and look at the stuff with you as well, and he'll report back to the council.
Now it's fixed, it's covered, yeah.
I know, but he knows what they...
I can prove to him anyhow.
Even if it's fixed, they have all the pictures and everything. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to have him discuss it with you, and then he's going to report back to the council.
A picture, it shows just the opening that goes into, this is the pipe, and it's an opening. It shows the opening in the pipe when they uncovered.
Yeah.
And this is, I disagree somehow, when you're coming with a big...
Yeah, back hole. Yes.
Like this one, when you try to dig, not with a shovel, it's, uh, after it's broken. But anyhow, I've seen where it was, and from the picture you can see the, a little spot. And also, it will be always... It will be always on you. I don't know how long you'll be the mayor, or how long some of you will be here.
Yes.
I won't be. He may be, he's young, and he's, he's young too. And he's very young, okay, beside me. Yes. And, but you'll have problem there, some other people, because there, it's like this. See, this is, it has to be straight.
Right.
But when it's little like this one, here always will be water.
Right.
And when it's a little more water, will create pressure, and everybody will have. And this is the problem there.
No, we understand.
Yes.
We have exhausted the time. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have Director Hawkins-
Sure, thank you.
Nico. There you go.
And for you, try, please, and find, for some idiots like me, another way to reach you and to talk. One was Mr. Guido, Italian. Mr. O'Reilly, the other one. In some other city. If I went to the Mr. Guido and was, and said, "Is Mr.?" No, it's not, if he, I have a problem. If he has time, I'll ask him. I could. And some other city, I'm not telling you which city. When I'm going, with some things, problems. If I sit there and I lie to, say hello, how are you doing? It's a question, it's a problem of politeness. So, plus something else. A good leader-
Mr. Nico.
Yes, sorry.
I appreciate it. But I mean, we, this is the council meeting.
The name, your name?
Yeah.
I knew about the name.
My mother, yeah.
Many years ago.
Many years ago. So I'm gonna have you talk to Director Hawkins, okay?
Good things.
Thank you. That'd be the first time I got to come in. Okay. All right, all right. We, we have pretty much ex- You wanna speak? We have, I think, is there any other cards besides this one? Okay, we have Mr. Wilson? Tom Wilson, yes. Yep, we had the card from, thank you. And just, we know your name, but state it for the record.
Hi, I'm Tom Wilson. I'm with the Dearborn Allied. Ron Allen ran out.
Yes.
And he had these Purple Heart supporter pins for you.
Love to have those.
And I didn't want to take too much time, but if I can just maybe-
Yeah, you can give him the Councilman Hamud, right here. He needs two of them. He always loses the-
There's also for the mayor, and there's extras. So I just wanted to, that's all I wanted to take your time.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you so much. We really do appreciate that. All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else on the council? Because we've exhausted the time. Remember, items are, are coming up. You can speak on those, and then there's unlimited time at the end. Mr. Clerk, we will close the public comment. And before we move into the consent agenda, are there any items that any member wishes to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Mr. Clerk, you may proceed.
We'll do a roll call vote for the resolution and offer, we need an offer and support.
Okay, one second, I'm sorry. I thought you had to read in there, in there. So you need to offer first. So who did, offer by Councilman Hamud? And who had the support? Councilman El-Sawafi was supported. All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll call vote?
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes to move all the items to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And we now have the next item.
The next item will be item number 15, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Enos approving the minutes of the previous special meeting of October 4th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? All right. Any questions or comments? Hearing, seeing, none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 16, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos approving the minutes of the previous special meeting of October 8th, 2024.
Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? All right, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 17, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Herrick approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of October 8th, 2024.
Okay, and are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? All right, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 18, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 24-1827, an ordinance to amend the licenses and business regulations, chapter, chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending section 12-5 entitled License Year Renewal. Resolution by councilmembers Herrick and El-Sawafi to take from the table for its final reading.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Unanimous roll will be attached, take from the table for its final reading. The purpose of this amendment is being made to update the expiration of, expiration date of dog licenses to align with state law. Currently licensed expire on March 31st. The proposed amendment changes will expire on, move from March 31st to March 1st annually to bring us in compliance with the state. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. So any questions or comments on this item? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 24-1827, an ordinance to amend the licenses and business regulations, chapter, chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending section 12-5 entitled License Year Renewal.
All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Item number 19, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 24-1828, an ordinance to amend the Parks and Recreations, chapter, chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending section 15-53 entitled Dog Park Use Generally. Resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos to take from the table for its final reading.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Unanimous roll shall be attached, take from the table for its final reading. The proposed amendment is being made to update the expiration date of the dog park permits to March 1st. This is being done to align with the proposed changes of the expiration date of the dog licenses to make it both, make it easier for the residents so they can access both permits, license, to expire at the same time. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments on this? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 24-1828, an ordinance to amend the Parks and Recreations, chapter, chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending section 15-53 entitled Dog Park Use Generally.
All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
All right, next item.
Item 20, ordinance number 24-1829, introduced by councilmember El-Sawafi. Synopsis, an ordinance to amend the offenses, chapter, chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 1 of Section 14-10 entitled Alarm Systems. Resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Paris to table the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Ordinance, section 14, 14-10, commonly referred to as the false alarm ordinance, regulates false alarms in the city and the fees assessed to alarm user when a police or fire responds to a false alarm. Under the existing ordinance, there is a five-tier structure assessing for false alarms, ranging from no fee for the first call and second call to $110 and to as high as $1,100 for the 10th and subsequent calls after. Appeals for false alarm fee go to a security systems board, which is comprised of the police chief and two members appointed by the mayor and subject to council approval. The proposed amendments are being made to address inequities in the ordinance, particularly as they relate to alarm users that experience extraordinary circumstances such as illness and death, which results in false alarm fees being assessed against the person or the state or the inheritance of the home or business. The proposed amendments do the following. Reduce the, reduce the fees assessed for the false alarms, abolishes the security board and replaces it with administrative appeals process handled by the police chief. Establish criteria for the police chief that must use in reviewing appeals and limit the number of false, of false alarm appeals that can be waived in a 12-month period. This is the first of two readings. Any questions or comments on this item? All right. Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 24-1829, an ordinance to amend the offenses, chapter, chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 1, Section 14-10 entitled Alarm Systems.
All right, and any questions or comments? Okay, unanimous, any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 21, ordinance number 24-1830, introduced by councilmember El-Sawafi. Synopsis, an ordinance to amend the nuisance, chapter, chapter 13 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending sections 13.5 entitled Notice to Abate and 13-5.1 entitled Immediate Abatement. Resolution by councilmembers Enos and Herrick to table the ordinance.
All right, under, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Under the existing ordinance, owners and occupants that receive a notice of violation, or NOV as it's called, have a limited time to abate the proper, to abate the violation, anywhere from three to 10 days for regular abatements under section 13-5 and 24 to 10 hours for immediate abatement under section 13-5.01 from the receipt of the time of posting. After posting, the NOV inspectors must re-inspect the property to verify whether the nuisance has been abated by the owner or occupant or if the city needs to abate the property with our contractor. This reinspection is often delayed due to a limited number of inspectors and a high number of nuisances that must be abated and often results in abatement contracts going to properties where the violation has already been corrected. This has resulted in increased costs for abatement contractors since the cost recovery under the ordinance is currently limited to situations where the city has abated the violation in itself. The proposed amendments do the following. They reduce the maximum time of owner-occupant has to abate the violation from 10 days to five. Requirement that the owner-occupant contact the city within the time period and notify whether the violation has been abated. If the city acts to abate the violation, a service fee of 50% of the cost of the payment will be charged if the violator was, violations was not abated by the, by the owner or occupant and, and they fail to notify the city of the payment with, within the lawful time period. This is the first of two readings. And we do have some comments on this. Councilman Paris?
I think it's already been answered, Council President. I'm sorry for that.
That's okay, no problem.
But just to mention the speaker that we had earlier, you know, we're looking at going down with $250 fine as opposed to the, you know, over $1,000 that we were talking about before. So it's already been covered, so thank you.
Councilman El-Sawafi.
Thank you, Council President. So this is a significant change. And just speaking on my experience for the past year or so, a lot of residents have been reaching out to me about different issues that they're seeing, whether it's tall grass, where people leaving trash out in front of their houses. So I'm happy to see this change here. But I do have some questions and I don't, because this is a significant change, Mayor or the director, can you guys speak to how residents can submit proof or remediation?
Yeah, so obviously, we, I think we have a start date coming up on, I think we're gonna add a start date of January 2025, correct?
Yeah, we're- Currently, this is the first reading?
Correct.
I was trying to avoid a study session, Mayor, because I don't want to get it to administrative aspect.
Yeah, yeah, it is administrative. And so for us, we're gonna provide multiple avenues. We're updating our NOV itself. And so there'll probably be a QR code and such. You can relay that information back online. We'll have a telephone number. So we're gonna try to provide multiple avenues for residents to communicate back to the department that the, that the issue has been abated.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, for that clarification. And then as far as, we heard from the resident, I already had this in mind. Certainly, some people will not be able to pay the fee. In that case, when they have a legitimate reason on why they cannot pay, is there a hardship provision?
No, currently, if somebody gets a ticket, there's no hardship provision. I think if you're not able to pay it, I think, correct if I'm wrong, but I think it's waiver committee. Yeah, there's a tax waiver committee that they can go to. And/or I think they can try to go through court and work with the judge if there's some hardship that gets applied there. A lot of the issues of code enforcement do go before a judge, and you're able to go, go for there for hardship before a judge.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor. This is the first reading, so we'll have some time for changes if we need to-
Yeah, we're gonna definitely have some time, and then we'll get with the mayor and see. Because I do want to come up with a, a good plan on how we could do it. Because it is a substantial shift. it is a substantial shift. The burden is now on the resident to clarify, you know, that they have already abated, which is fair.
Correct.
Uh, we just want to make sure that there's a record on both sides. I think, I think that was well communicated at the committee of the whole.
Correct.
Uh, we have, Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, I think we covered most of it, but I want to say, yeah, I think the, to the resident who kind of spoke on it, I wish that they were still here, because it was more relevant on the item exactly, because it's funny, I was laughing, we exactly said those comments at the study session when we first heard with the mayor, and then we talked about it again on Thursday. So we are very cognizant that giving people less time might sound bad at first, but in a lot of these situations, there's already a lot of leeway from the inspector, and it was always a maximum of ten days anyway. And I think actually exercising some of this is gonna be more on kind of what the mayor pointed to, very egregious violations and repeat violators, and actually the not to exceed, we, Councilman Abraham put it in on purpose, and it was a good idea, because we didn't want to get too punitive.
Correct.
The reason why we're collecting money even on abatements and forcing residents to, you know, actually give us feedback, which is something that the council's struggling with, and we're gonna continue to work on, is because we want to make sure that we can get contractors who are available to go abate this. You know, we're having a hard time even getting contractors, just for people to understand why we're making this change, to, to bid on these projects, because they don't get paid unless they actually abate something, and if, you know, you've abated something in that lag time, they don't get anything. So right now, we're changing our ordinance to allow us to get more people to be able to go do the abate work. So we're gonna continue to work on that and hopefully find a good solution, so.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Herrick?
I just wanted to remind folks that whether it's a notice violation, like the ones we've mentioned today, tall grass is often an example, but if a resident reaches out, call as soon as possible to the phone number on the notice of violation to the inspector, because as my colleague just mentioned, that inspector will work with you and determine how much time, you know, for whatever the particular issue is on your property, how much time is really needed to address it, and as long as you keep those lines of communication open and continue to keep up the conversation with the inspector, it will go more smoothly for everybody, it makes it easier. And then especially once the work is completed, you know, immediately notify the city as soon as the work is done.
I'll just give a great example of this. I had a business owner call me today. He's illegally parking trucks in a lot, which was a code enforcement issue, and we said that's absolutely unacceptable, and while he might have a few days to rectify, he called back and said, "I'll, I'll be out exactly on like November one," which is a little bit longer than traditionally, and we're working with him. And so we're like, "Great, we're not gonna issue the ticket." It was within the ten days, and so we're not gonna issue the ticket, but we'll allow you that time in order for you to get those trucks off this lot, and everybody walks away. It's not gonna be punitive.
Yeah.
He didn't know, he found another lot in a different city, and he's moving his trucks there. And so it's, again, we do work with residents all the time.
No, Mayor, the administration, your administration has been doing that since we, you took over. We know that. We just want to make sure, because it's a writing, it's gotta last beyond us, right?
Right.
But you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, we're trying to make it, everything better for the residents, and hopefully they do see that, but thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? All right, and, Mr. Clerk, where were we on the first reading?
Yes.
Okay, may we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-four dash eighteen thirty, an ordinance to amend the nuisance chapter, chapter thirteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending section thirteen point five entitled Notice to Abate and thirteen point, uh, five point one entitled Immediate Abatement.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall attach. Next item.
Item twenty-two, resolution by Councilmembers Abraham and El Salafi, awarding a contracted Commonwealth Group LLC for the sale and redevelopment of the city-owned vacant lot located at two-two-one-nine-zero Michigan Avenue for the sum of four-hundred-thousand dollars, with a completion deadline of twenty-four months, subject to certain stipulations and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I think we have some photos on this, that, some exciting news, and the Director, Tori, if we can have you up, up here at the front, and a representative from the, the winning bidder. The Economic Development Department, based on feedback from the community, has been working to increase the variety of businesses and entertainment amenities in our business district to complete an already very strong presence of restaurants and coffee shops, plenty of those, right? They're all, they're all full, though.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Nothing wrong with that. The city, the city-owned lot of Michigan and Howard is in the heart of West Downtown District and presents a unique opportunity to capitalize on this type of investment, and Economic Development Department sought to achieve this by attracting a creative local business developer in our community. So between May and July of twenty twenty-four, the city posted two competitive RFPs inviting bids to be, for the proposed redevelopment and the concepts of the city-owned lot, which this is actually the third time it's went out as well, just for residents. Throughout this competitive process, the RFP team evaluated the proposals based on the variety of factors that has set forward through the administration, the council. The valuation and, the team on behalf of the Development Department recommends the word of the development on two-two-one-nine-zero on Michigan Avenue to the Commonwealth Group LLC for the purchase price of four-hundred-thousand dollars is requested the council authorize the sale and redevelopment of this property. So I know we have the winning bidder here as well as our director, and then, Mr. Romer, I know that I had sent in a request because there were some court cases regarding property and tax foreclosure, and I know my colleagues have received like the cost breakdown from finance, but finance always deals with straight numbers. So, Mr. Romer, can you just briefly explain what you're still working on that's not available at this time?
Well, we had the Supreme Court case that came out-
Like, yeah.
-related to properties purchased from the right of first refusal from the county, and how those proceeds, when they exceed what you purchased them for through foreclosure, where they go. Typically, in the past, the county or the state retained those proceeds, so that case changed that right, it gave it back to the prior individual lawsuit through foreclosure. So we have to go back. You have Michael's breakdown of the cost, but those costs don't include litigation expenses related to that parcel previously, so that's what I'm looking into. I'm going to look into that case. I believe that we can include those cost breakdown. I have to figure that out, and then I will read the case thoroughly and provide the council with an opinion as to whether those costs, in addition to the ones Michael have provided, can also be withheld as far as when it comes to the forfeiture of the proceeds.
Right, thank you, Mr. Romer. I just want to make sure my colleagues heard that, because prior to that court case, and also the county longstanding would allow us to recoup any costs, such as holding maintenance, taxes, so on and so forth, which, just so everybody knows where we're at, I thought it was very important for us to hand on, to be handled on that. So, Mr. Tori, if you'd like to just introduce yourself and give us a little basis on this third go-around and, and how, where we're at today.
Thank you, Council President. Jordan Tori, Economic Development Director. We're very excited to be before you today, and I appreciate your, your point, Council President. This is the third time that the city has attempted to try to get a proposal to bring some life to a vacant lot. What we saw in this competition, this latest round, were several excellent proposals. This was a very thorough competitive process, and it was a really tough conversation. So when we got together, one of the biggest things that we focused on, in addition to the criteria that were in the RFP, we really wanted an opportunity to bring something different to the West Downtown, something that's gonna drive additional foot traffic, something that will be unique and resilient, and add to what we already have in the downtown. Considering my career, I would agree, there is nothing wrong with a strong restaurant and dining presence. I think we have the best in the region, if not the state. This can add to it. So when we looked at the proposals that came before us, and I don't want to steal any of the, the proposies' thunder, but I'll just speak from the perspective of the committee, and I know we provided a little context since the cow, we saw an opportunity to, to go in two different directions. You had one, one proposal that was housing and retail on the first floor, and another that was office anchored by a local business. We thought, when we looked at these, when you looked at the criteria and the RFP, that this proposal better fit what we were looking for in the West Downtown, what we were thinking could be a resilient, positive contribution to the West Downtown, and also, one thing that weighed heavily for us is this proposal is not leaning on tax incentives to bring their development to fruition.
Right.
So they're, they're looking to do that out of their own pocket and with their own sources, and that is something that, given the weight that incentives play in development overall, that was something that stood out to us, and that was something that was worth taking a look at with an established business here in our community, an opportunity to grow and root here. So with that, I would, I would certainly kick it to, if council has any specific questions to us, sir, or if you want to hear from the proposy first.
Yep. So thank you, Mr. Tori, for that. I do appreciate it, and just for some context for the rest, for the residents and to see the drawings and renderings on the, on the screen, and there's some placards here as well for this item. I just wanted to go back to when we first took over, we had our original winning bidder, and the issue with the housing, which we all wanted, some type of retail housing, is that if someone's gonna pay, I don't want to say three-hundred-thousand dollars or more for a condominium and not have a parking spot guaranteed, or two, that was the challenge, it seemed like. So what, what we like here, what I personally like here, is that what we're doing is, this is a multifaceted global headquarters, so it's gonna have a training center, a books, book, retail shop in the, in the beginning floor, and from what I understand, and I know the gentleman's gonna speak to it, but I want people to understand, when you have a piece of property, and you want to give somebody a place to live, and you can't guarantee a specific spot for them to park, that's very challenging. So we did have, on our term, when we took over, we had a winning bid that was won in the previous administration, that won the bid, came forward, had all the funding, all the necessary, and withdrew after. The second bidder that had won, we called them and said, "Hey, you guys could come back," and they had fully funded, and they withdrew. So I just want the residents to understand, this is a very, very tough piece of property, because it is in a limited space, and you need something that is multifaceted, something that will bring people down there, and will also can be held for longer term, especially for me, owner-occupied is the big issue, when you have a headquarters or your world headquarters in, in one spot, and you're there every day, it's gonna make a big difference. But before I open up to my colleagues, I'd like to introduce the Commonwealth, and if you could just state your name.
Thank you. Good morning, Commonwealth Global Council, Mr. Mayor.
So thank you for being here today. I know that you had a scheduled business trip that you canceled to be here, so I, I do appreciate that. I know this is a very big, big project for you, and it's, it's the next step in your, in your business venture, so if you want to just give a little bit of background to the council, I know you did it at the committee of the whole, just on high-level aspect of what this looks like to you, and phases, and where you're gonna, where you see it in the, in the near future.
High level, from a accounting firm perspective, as you mentioned, this is our global headquarters. So the fact that this property will be owner-occupied lessens the risk on behalf of the city and us. So my, our mission, day one, is we close on this property, we know that there's a set timeline, and we've already built a tremendous amount of interest. I think that's very unique. There's already developers who are reaching out to us, there are tenants who are pitching us on ideas and why we should take them on, and, not to jump the gun, but we do have a plan within the next few days, actually, to launch a website, to take applications in regards to developers who are interested in working on this development, tenants who want to lease from us potentially on the first floor, and professionals who are looking to lease one of the twenty offices that we're gonna have.
There's also, from what we've seen in the rendering, some conference or training center aspect as well?
Yeah, so I believe something very unique to this area, I'm not aware of any private office space that has an, almost like an event center. So it's not an event center where we're gonna have hundreds of people. This is probably gonna fit maybe fifty to, fifty to a hundred max, and what's unique about this stage is it's going to be an auditorium feel, where there, there's a huge demand for education away from the college side necessarily, where it's opportunities to teach business owners, even local residents, on how to open up an LLC, how to file for certain licensing, how to potentially start their own business within the City of Dearborn. And I feel like there's a massive need for that, and from our perspective, we're in a quality, the quality game, where the number of clients that we have is based on quality, but this is an opportunity where we can pitch the quantity of people who don't necessarily own a business, and it's not gonna cost a monthly premium to work with us, but this is kind of our way to educate residents on how to become entrepreneurs and business owners, and become a little bit more self-reliant. Now, we're also going to offer this space to tenants within the building, so if they have, if they're lawyers or insurance providers, or, you know, they're in different types of industries, they can welcome their own clients and guests, and pitch them on seminars and courses. And that's been, we've gotten a lot of feedback recently. We just had a post on TCD recently, and it did very well.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that. Yeah, that's excellent. Well, thank you very much, Mr. DeBajja, thank. So before we continue, I know there was a lot of questions regarding, from purchasing that they answered, and I know finance here that they answered via email, and, Mr. Romer, there was just some questions regarding, the contract had the standard terms, which is verification of funds and a performance bond. Can you just speak to that, Mr. Romer?
Yeah, they've satisfied the requirements. I know, I mean-
I know, you weren't here for the cow. Yeah, you weren't here for the cow. There was a lot of questions of what is a performance bond, and, and was it in the, is, was it in the standard contract?
It's in the contract. The performance bond safeguards the city from the event that, on the acquisition of the sale, and this rendering does not come to fruition by Mr. DeBajja, that you can go after the bond, the amount of the overall project cost. So that's the, that's the benefit and the safeguard for the requirement of the performance bond.
Excellent. All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we had that for all, all our council. So I'd like to open up for comments from my council. Councilman Enos?
How much is the performance bond?
The performance bond is going to be required to cover the full project cost, so whatever that submission cost on the rendering totals, plus the acquisition cost of the land, they're going to be required to submit a bond for.
As Councilmember, if you help me ask a question, just in the proposal, and certainly Mr. DeBajja- Correct me if I'm getting this wrong, but there was an estimated cost of four-point-five million dollars. Certainly, we would, as we kind of moved to that phase, assuming if, if there is an approval, we would make sure that number is accurate and firmed up.
Councilman Enos, to answer your question? All right, Councilman El Salafi?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, Mr. DeBajja, thank you so much for proposing to do an investment in the City of Dearborn. I owned my own small business before, and I know it's not easy to make an investment, it takes a lot of courage, so I just want to thank you upfront for that, but I also want to ask you some questions, because we've been down this road before, and we want to make sure we're not back over here. As far as how you're funding this, does your proposal depend on any economic incentives, like different grants or brownfield grants?
No, we did not want to delay this.
Okay, so you're fully financing this, and then just looking at some of the information that we got, it seems like this would bring about fifty thousand dollars in tax collections to the city, and there's more for the county, so that's, that's a plus.
Yes, we, thank you, Council. Yeah, we did have that sent over, but I'm glad you brought out the numbers.
And then, any kind of redevelopment experience, and what is your financial capacity to make sure this comes into fruition?
So the experience comes in, probably the most element of doing any development, which is the finances, the reporting. We have a great amount of experience in terms of dealing with investors, not only within our network, but on our clients' behalf, so we're very familiar with this process. Another point I'd like to make is, at the end of the day, successful business owners and investors understand the importance of delegating and seeking out the most qualified individuals to represent their interests, and that goes as far as, as far as even in development.
Okay, on that same point of qualified individuals, I know we have a lot of qualified individuals and companies in the City of Dearborn. Will you be willing to prioritize those companies if they fit your needs?
As long as they meet the standard of excellence that we seek, on behalf of ourselves and the city, we are, we'd be more than happy to work with a resident of the, of the city as long as they meet those expectations, which are very high. We know this is a one-time deal in shop, so we are willing to do that.
Absolutely, thank you. And I guess this is for the director, who were part of the committee, so you might be able to answer this as well, as the project manager, as far as the impact for traffic and then parking in the area.
Yeah.
What is some of the impact, you see, Director?
So, in part, it would depend on their operating hours, but as an office use, and if you're gonna have, you know, one-off events, you might have temporary influxes into the downtown, if they have an event that has fifty people, but overall, generally, if you're talking office and retail, it wouldn't be any worse than anything we already have in the West Downtown.
And I'd also add, the parking study came back saying we have more than ample parking in our downtown. In fact, there are two parking decks that fit, that's fairly empty, seventy percent empty, actually, right across the street from the development.
About a six-minute walk from this building.
Not even a six-minute walk. It's probably like a three-minute walk.
Okay.
Just the parking study, they come back, and it literally said specifically, "We have more than ample parking," and to not construct any new parking, because we just need better parking management of the spars, the spaces we currently have.
And that's exactly what I want to hear, Mayor. I know there were some concerns from residents that this would impact parking, or there would not be enough parking, but that's exactly the explanation I wanted from the director and from you, Mayor, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
One more thing for the director.
Absolutely.
Director, anything, just for the record, any drawbacks that you, that you see with this proposal?
So I would just say in general, and I would say this applies to varying degrees with all the solicitations, there's always a risk in development.
Sure.
There's always the unforeseen, there's the things that you don't know, what you don't know, something could go wrong. Nothing ever goes a hundred percent smooth. That's really the risk I see.
Okay.
Other than that, this is, this is a sound proposal, this is a known quantity in terms of a business that's been operating in our community, and the end vision is something that I know would complement our district, so-
And most of the risks typically get worked out before shoveling ground.
Correct.
Just to be clear, like, I mean, the last two people who approached us when they first were awarded the bid, they walked away before they were shoveling ground. They went back, ran the numbers, and said, "We can't do this without a sentence." And then the second group came forward, the same exact thing, and so that's typically where the risk flushes out, before you actually have a half building up and then try to figure out what to do with it.
And if I may just add, too, one of the reasons we, we ended up being responsible for two of the RFP rounds is we wanted to have extra scrutiny on feasibility and have the applicants speak to more detail. So what was received in this latest third round was more than we got in the, in the second, in terms of really, really putting pencil to paper with these applicants and understanding that they know what they're signing up for.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman, you good?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for being here, and I know you have some other people in the audience with you, too, so I appreciate you being here tonight. You know, I gotta say, taking a look at the renderings and what we saw during the committee of the whole and so on, very nice. I mean, it's excellent. You know, just to the audience and to you, I'd like everybody to understand first that there were eight-hundred-and-twelve vendors soliciting for this property, and to see, the city, according to the backup material, we received forty-two solicitations, yet only three proposals were originally received, and of course, one of those proposals was disqualified, and we have the paperwork to show the reason why. And I appreciate that, because I did ask for, you know, some of the material that we were able to receive the day after the committee of the whole. So I just want to let people know, for those that are not aware of it, it's the former brothers' former warehouse property of Michigan and Howard, been vacant for some time, and just like the Council President said, it was eventually demolished a number of years ago, the city had been dealing with the property in one state or another for the last ten to fifteen years, and I remember that, and a lot of us remember what was going on with that property. Prior owners sought to secure brownfield development grant funds from the state fifteen years ago, and because of the development of this property, and sought other funds, or there may be other funds that he was gonna seek. Even you said, Director Tori, that there's a risk in development, you know, for something like this. This is a challenged property, and it has a small footprint to build on, it's very challenging, and who knows if it can be delayed once uncovering whatever is underground. We've covered everything up. There were bids on this property three years ago, and then the four-hundred-thousand-dollar bid was approved by council for a four-story building during the January eleventh, two-thousand-and-two council meeting. Not long afterwards, that developer backed out, and like the Council President said, two developers, everybody backed out. Challenging, no doubt about it. The current performance, or the proposal before us, may also face real challenges, we're, we're gonna have to see, especially with today's economic climate and escalating costs for scarce construction material and resources. The bidder before us answered a question in the bid process on a questionnaire, whether the project anticipates seeking any county, state, or other development incentive support in order to complete the project. The question was answered, we would welcome all incentives available to incentivize business and real estate growth opportunities. Yet just a few minutes ago, I just heard that we're not gonna go after any incentives, and then we had some other comments that were made, too, but another bidder for a project answered the same questions and was more specific and in more detail by stating funding sources may include economic development incentives, like grants, an NEZ, like a neighborhood enterprise zone, a CREC, or brownfield funds. Again, that brownfield funds is coming up. Bidders were given questions and a page that included qualifications. What concerns me, though, here, is I know during the committee of the whole, there was some discussion, and we brought forward some comments about, it seems like we have some black, our blank pages, you know, within the RFP that was presented us to in backup, And the purchasing person was before us and said, "Yeah, we'll make sure that you get those." And we did get some material back, you know, in email form. But what I want to say is, on the RFP, the whole proposal package, it does list qualifications and minimum qualifications, this is what I want to bring up. It says, "Minimum qualification respondents, specifically, the business that will contractually be bound under the contract with the city of Dearborn will be deemed non-responsive and rejected without any further evaluation if they do not meet the following qualifications." First one is the respondent and its key personnel must have, at a minimum, in totality, six years development experience, 10 years preferred, and successful completion of two comparable projects since 2018. The respondent must provide documentation from those two comparable projects, including at a minimum, the address, date of construction, general contractor name, use mix, occupancy rates, and turnover rates for each project. The reason why I'm bringing this up, because we were making mention during the committee of the whole, that we didn't see any such projects coming forward for us to take a look at. Yet again, the other proposal that we were able to get had five different prior projects within the last six years, I believe, that were completed or just recently completed. And so, I don't know if there's any explanation for that or anything we can talk about, or was there any other projects that?
So, let's direct the question to the petitioner's.
The director.
Yeah, so, your question is, is that you believe that what you indicated, what you read the contract is indicating that the minimum bid should be disqualified, so Mr. Tordi, I know purchasing is not here, but do you have, do you have any situation, anything you could explain on that? Because I understand, the way I understand this is that it was based on a point system, but what Councilman Paris is indicating is this was an automatic disqualifying aspect, is that the way you understand it?
So, Council President, thank you. So, when we looked at these proposals, we did not believe it met the threshold for immediate disqualification based on the nature of the business that the applicant conducts. Certainly, if the applicant would like to explain sort of like some of the details of their network, yes, the application was light on those details. But our look at the business, we believe that the nature of their business gave them sufficient experience to be in this space. So, we did not believe it triggered the threshold for immediate disqualification, but to the Council President's point, it was based on a point system and financial capacity and development competency, if you will, sort of combined into one category. So, it's not a perfect apples-to-apples since they're both in the same category. Yes, I would certainly concede that the other proposal had that more direct experience, but in our evaluation and certainly, you know, I know purchasing is not here, but certainly from my perspective, it did not trigger the requirement for immediate disqualification.
Right, and just, I'm a councilman, so you can follow up, and just for, so the residents understand, the other proposals, no matter what you picked, it's this council that makes the decision.
Correct.
I just want to make that clear before we get off into some, but I won't let it happen, so it's up to the council to decide what we want to do with this. And what we've had is housing from both, on our first term, the gentleman were three parties that showed multi-millions of dollars of escrow and no financing, and they withdrew. Again, the proposal that was left as competition to owner-occupied business was a housing development, is that correct?
Forgive me, sir, could you please repeat that?
The other bidder, yeah, I know, yeah, the other bidder had a housing, someone's going to sleep there at night.
Yes, sorry, yes, yes.
Okay. All right, so that's what's before us, so I guess it was asked and answered that you deemed this was not disqualifying, but again, that's up to the council.
Sure.
Whether we decide, so, Councilman Paris, you had some follow-up?
If I could, the other bid we asked about it was $450,000 and I know there's, this looks great, I mean, it does, it's very innovative, owner-occupied is a great thing, I totally get that. Personally, the project before us looks very good on paper with excellent renderings, floor plans, and descriptive narratives. I wish everybody well in the future with much success with their business dealings. I just felt that this bid seemed a little bit incomplete and some with speculative answers, especially as it talked about occupancy expectations. We're looking at the future, what it might be, and it's kind of hard to say right away that you're going to be 100% occupied within a short period of time. Wishful, I hope so, and I hope it's successful, I appreciate that.
We appreciate it.
We do have challenges.
Yeah, but just for the council, the occupancy is not before, it's not the council purview. If someone likes to build a building and have it completely empty and they pay, that's not our, the occupancy has nothing to do with us. I just want to make sure that we put that out there. Before I get to Councilman Hamud, Mr. DeBajwa, did you want to speak on any of that or would you like to hear from the other council people first?
I'd like to hear.
Councilman Hamud was next.
Yeah, so, thank you for coming, we appreciate all this. Got a chance to look at some more information over the weekend and talk to ECD and legal. I think for me, a lot of this stuff we brought up kind of during committee of the whole, I can understand not better, I wish purchasing was here, I don't see market, but.
Michael's here.
It's fine, I'll talk about that in a moment, but I think, I think a lot of the hesitation doesn't come from the idea, I think the idea is great. And, I mean, at the end, I think, I have more of a bone to pick with ECD and purchasing right now, because there was a couple of things that we didn't get on Thursday that we should have gotten. And, like, for example, we've been talking about for three years that we needed to get, you know, assessed value delivered to us along with tax impact. And it took a council question to answer that, and that's fine, but you know what, I have to say on the record, that cannot happen anymore. Because we are working very hard right now as part of our administration to balance the budget, we need to understand what the impacts are on the budget when we want to greenlight projects on city properties, that's one. And then, I would say, as far as the purchasing aspect is concerned, there are blank pages. And while it's, I have a similar concern kind of with Councilman Paris, but I landed in a different place, so that's what I'll say, which is, if it's okay for certain minimum qualifications to not be filled out on the RFP form, then delete that page in the form because no one should have to fill it out. Because, yes, at the end of the day, council does make the decision, those rules that we write on the paper that my colleague read off are arbitrary rules that we create as a city. And if it's not an ordinance, then to me, it's not something we have to abide by, and quite frankly, we're the council and we make the rules, so if we decide that it's okay, it's fine. But for me, it's about fairness and it's about bidders, right? If we put out verification, if we put out minimum qualifications that say you need three projects and this many million and all that, and then, but we're willing to award to people who don't have these things, which again, I tend to be willing to award it, so it's not, you know, I like the project. But you dissuade other bidders from bidding if you set the bar so high. So, if we're willing to overlook some of these things just because somebody has a good idea, then we should say that. I don't think it's fair to other bidders to set these qualifications in our paperwork and to be willing to overlook it kind of arbitrarily. So, that's my comment to purchasing, is you guys need to revise your minimum qualification form if we don't actually utilize it, because we have several blank pages on this RFP that I think we're very likely going to award. So, that's on the process. On the idea, you know what, and where I sleep peacefully at night, and I'll say this for council, performance bond, if you guys get it done, then that's great, and I think this is 100% worth taking the risk and inshallah you guys are able to get it done. And it sounds like ECD, Mayor's Office, my colleagues are very confident that you can deliver it, and so am I. And most importantly, no tax dollars are going to waste on this. I do appreciate the fact that you're not asking for incentives because that does tend to drag out the process, and you know, your solid confidence in 24 months is excellent, because I don't know how you're going to do it, but that's not my problem. So, like I said, inshallah, and I think the key is that, I think we can all rest easy, understanding that, you know, we're going to hold you, it's a lot of things, and I actually really like the renderings. It reminds me of my current offices at Ford and the new buildings, they, it's all the glass openness. I would just say, Hic, maybe put some blinds or something for when you're having confidential meetings, but that's about it. So, thank you and good luck.
Yeah, blinds, absolutely. Thank you, Councilman. All right, just so for my colleagues, the purchasing, when you all came in under my direction, I gave you all the purchasing ordinance, so this is all in the purchasing ordinance section. So, just remember, if we want to change the criteria via ordinance, that what we want in these sections, we can do that and we should do that at that time. I don't disagree that we should have the information, but let's just go back to what we're dealing with, we were dealing with vacant land. So, Mr. Kennedy, how much were we receiving in taxes on vacant land? We owned it.
We owned it.
Zero.
So, we had costs, so that's a negative in my, that's usually red, right? Negative? All right, so what's the estimated tax, I know we asked, I asked that to be sent over, but again, we could put this in the purchasing ordinance that these are the criteria that they must provide, that could be easier as well. But let's hear from the director as far as the taxes.
Good evening, Michael Kennedy, Finance Director. The estimated project cost is obviously used to come up with an estimated assessed value.
Yeah.
We're talking all estimates here, but using those and the current mills would generate $46,000 of tax calculation for the city. However, it's in the DDA, West DDA, so that capture goes to the city, or excuse me, the DDA. And there's other county operating costs that go in there, tax collection, so it's roughly $48,000 to $50,000 range is what we're looking at. That the West DDA would capture to use on further programming in that area.
Absolutely, which, for the residents out there, that is something that the council created, so we know that that's where it's going, we delegated that there.
And you can see it with estimate all over the sheet, I'll also just note that those are current tax millages, maybe a year and a half before we're there, I don't, I can't predict where we're going to be at for that.
No, no, we understand their estimates, I just wanted to make sure the residents understand. And a lot of us, I think all of us, most of all of us joined in on where we're going to be here tomorrow, asking for tax increment financing and several tax incentives that will be coming in stages for a project on Warren Avenue. So, for where we went through, where the business owner that's been there for years is asking us to help them put a roof on the building. I made that very clear to them that, you know, our job is not to put a roof on the building. I also had the city attorney provide to all the council, what is the tax, what is the obligation of the council? And again, I've told my colleagues, you can think what you want, but you have to go by what it says on the law on what you have to do to grant these taxes, incentives. This project is seeking no tax incentives. And as far as the purchase price, 400 or 450, to me, it's immaterial because we got the property at a tax foreclosure, which means if there's any proceeds, that's why I started this off, that that subject could end up going back to someone else. We can't retain, so contract law, because I actually said this on the last council and sent the emails, and then the Supreme Court, was it Supreme Court, Mr. Roman?
That's right.
Said exactly what I said four years ago, that you can't take somebody's house that owes $4,000, sell it for 60 and keep the $54,000. And that's what happened, okay? And now the state and the Supreme Court said, "You can't do that, you have to return the difference back," because contract law says you can only get back to where you were supposed to be made hold. So, to me, whether it's 400 or 450, this project has been sitting vacant for 12, 14, 15 years. And for me to have an owner-operator, and Mr. DeBajwa, I don't want, I just want to make sure for the record for the residents, if there isn't a single person but your group in there, are you able to sustain the building?
Absolutely, or else we wouldn't even take this on as an investment.
Okay.
We're just looking for a new office space.
So, now all my colleagues had a chance to speak, I'd like to have you be able to wrap it up and then we will have, Mr. Kennedy, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, I just want to clarify or add substance to one comment. So, RFP, because I'm representing purchasing tonight, because the purchasing manager is sick, but the RFP has the categories that are graded by the committee that's formed. Cross-departmental committee that's formed to review the projects. You're not going to hear me say this very often, but cost isn't always the best thing to go by.
Well, we learn that a lot.
And that's why the cost is not shown to those people rating the projects. The cost does assign points at the end by the purchasing manager and it's weighted also appropriately. So, if someone gave a higher purchase price, they get more points than the person that had lower points. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
No, thank you.
But that is effectively in the rating score also.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for making that clear, and that's just for the residents too, I don't want someone to think that the government is telling somebody what to build. What's happening here is that this is owned by the citizens, by the taxpayers, so when we do buy property like we did for our development of the Wagner Place and all of that downtown, which I was, Councilman Abraham was here as well, when we buy a property, then we can control the project. Okay, and I know that some of us love the coffee shops and I do too, but we're looking for something different. So, I just want the residents to understand, because the citizens and the taxpayers own this property, that's why we can dictate what we want to see there, because we want somebody to fill that, fill those buildings so they can go buy the coffee. So, that's why I want to make sure that everybody understands, so I do appreciate that. So, Mr. DeBajwa, would you like to make any more statement regarding this project?
Oh, thank you all for the opportunity. That was part of the reason why we even pitched this, because within our community, there's a great amount of money and investors, but it's, this was more of an idea. And for us, I don't think housing or any of the other investment would necessarily pan out on that property, it hasn't historically. But the whole purpose of this was to bring bodies into the downtown. So, on a local level, we definitely believe that the occupancy rate will be extremely high. I know that you may think that's wishful thinking, but I hope one day to have you at the office just to show you how, who we are. Another reason is, we also anticipate people traveling, staying at the Dearborn Inn, that's going to be renovated, visiting the coffee shops, the restaurants in the area. So, we truly want to be a driving factor of just business being spent within Dearborn, almost like ambassadors of the city. That's our whole reason why we took on this project, and we are going to, you know, make this investment, we're really looking forward to it. It's owner-occupied, we have a network of investors and developers and professionals who can't wait to be part of this, and we just can't wait to show you guys.
Thank you, Mr. DeBajwa. Any other questions or comments for my colleagues?
I just have a comment.
Councilman Abraham, absolutely.
Thank you again for investing in our community. I just want to point out one thing with this process that is really how we got here, and that is that the city takes a chance buying these properties to control to a certain aspect, what ends up, and in this case, a very visible downtown area. And without that risk that the community takes on and the city takes on by purchasing these properties, I know honestly, that corner could be a parking lot.
Hmm, that's right.
And that's not the outcome of this council or previous councils that they're looking for in an area that we're trying to develop, especially in the DDA. For those who don't know exactly how that works, the $48,000 that was estimated by the Finance Director that will be recaptured into the DDA or the Downtown Development Authority, gets reinvested right into that downtown area. $50,000 every year in additional funding and budgeting that can be used to clean the street, clean the sidewalks, clean the windows, facades, whatever the DDA Board decides within the limits of the law. That additional $50,000 of funding will be used, and it will grow over time, assuming the valuations grow over time. And these things get messy because the city and investors don't always align. And there are significant economic conditions like pandemics and supply chain issues that no one has absolute control over. And so, we kind of, in this case, I think we stumbled our way to today. But that doesn't mean we have to stumble the rest of the way. So, we encourage you to stay on your feet, stay sharp, and be successful, so thank you.
Oh, Councilman Herrick, yes?
Thank you, I appreciate the comments of my colleagues on council and thank you for your vision. I had some questions that were answered on Thursday and my colleagues addressed some of the other things we had discussed on Thursday as well. One of the things that the 33rd Council did was put into place form-based code in this area. And what that boils down to in my layman's understanding is that we are striving to have a downtown that's thriving and walkable and has a variety of businesses that attracts a variety of people to the downtown. And I appreciate you talking about, you know, people that come to visit as well as people who live here, and what do we need to make it vibrant and for them to want to be in that area. On Thursday, I did mention, I love the idea that you had mentioned books, because that's a warm, welcoming environment, and if you're able to sell those books, bookstores are pretty much out of existence. And there are a lot of people who love being able to touch books, so I think, and of course, we have our library, we're with great resources and you can check out books online and, but to have a cup of coffee and to have those books there is a warm and welcoming feeling. And then the things you've also proposed for the other floors, it is different than anything else that we have here. Limited space and a lot of creativity has gone into what you're proposing, and I really appreciate that. Because it fits in with what we were talking about years ago when we talked about form-based code, what do we need to do with the vision of, you know, with Ford Motor Company's injection of dollars into developing Wagner Place? And so, this is just an evolution on that. My concern is that we don't end up having a project that's half-finished and that the city has to take that back on and find a developer to continue it, which is why I asked about your experience with similar projects in the past. And that is still one of my concerns. I know that you have a very successful business, but you haven't taken on a project similar to this in the past. But it sounds like you've got some good partners lined up, and I do wish that that was part of the proposal that you'd brought forward as who the development partners would be. But obviously, I'm glad that our Economic Development Department had three different rounds of meetings to flush it out and make sure that what you are proposing is a good fit and is a doable project. So, I'm really excited to see what we have a couple of years down the road, and I thank you for taking this on, because we have been waiting for the right opportunity to develop that corner. And as my colleague on council said, we certainly, with form-based code, we didn't want a parking lot and that wouldn't have been a parking lot, but we didn't want it empty. And this goes way beyond just building something, it's something visionary, so thank you.
All right, and then before we wrap it up, just for Mr. DeBajwa, I know that we had spoken before, and I know that there was limited time for this, so just for some of the colleagues or some of the residents that were concerned about not completing or some stuff that we're not completing, you drew those renderings yourself?
Yeah, actually, we have a client that is.
That's what I meant. That's what I meant. I wanted to make sure the residents understood. It seems very clear to me that you took a lot of time on what, what is it going to look like and what your vision is going to be. So to me, I think that's what's won it over. The financing and asking for tax incentives, where we all were at on Warren Avenue, asking, the business was asking us to fix the roof of their building. That's what happened yesterday.
Can we save tomorrow?
I will save it for tomorrow, but that's what happened, but, no, but the residents have to know what's going on here. When you have no taxes being asked for, and you have someone that's spending most of his time seeing on what would fit there, I think that's important. And I just like to remind my colleagues, they were all there for the picture that's coming in the council connection. The bidder for the Peace Park was also never did a peace, never did a governmental park either, and I don't see anybody that had any problem with the way that thing looked. So there's always a way to always say, let's do it the way it was, or the way it's always been. That Peace Park is a gem. There's going to be people coming from all over, all over the state for that place, and that person had never done a municipal park. And I think that park right there is knocked out of the, knocked out of the park. So for my colleagues, I just want to make them understand, and for everybody out there, this council and this administration has been rooted in working with people that have a vision and want to make something different that we have to unique to bring to this, and I think this project hits her right on the head. So I can't thank you enough for your investment and your time, and appreciate you being here today as well, as well as with your family.
Thank you very much.
So at that point, we were going to go ahead, and any other questions or comments, we're going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
No.
Councilmember Elsawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilman Enos.
Yes.
Six days, the resolution passes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck. All right, next item, please.
Item 23, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Hamud, awarding a contract to OHM Advisors in the amount not to exceed $1,991,313 for the National Environmental Protection Act review, design, and community engagement on the Warren Avenue Transformation Project, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The NEPA review, design, engineering, community, enjoyment, and bidding document work is necessary for taxes to realize the vision, I'm sorry, of, or transforming Warren Avenue. As everyone knows, that we have a project of $24.8 million of federal grant dollars received by the City of Dearborn. This contract will provide the city with resources and expertise needed to develop the highest standards, quality plans, and ensure that we have a consistent communication with the community, ensure the effectiveness, regulatory compliance, and sustainability of the proposed plans to ensure a long-term benefit to the Warren Avenue corridor and Dearborn as a whole. A project page will be set up online to ensure the community has access to relevant information and opportunities to engage in this project on Warren Avenue. The valuation team on behalf of the Economic Development Department recommends the word of the contract to OHM Advisors for design engineering services on Warren Avenue Transformation Project, which will be charged to the General Capital Improvement Fund, Project A28024. The contract will be valid for a one-time purchase of $1,991,313. And then, Mayor, I know you're here from Mrs., oh, Mayor, okay. Mr., yeah, Mr. Torri from Economic Development. Just so, in the writing terms and layman's terms, this project, this is one thing that this administration has been doing very, very well. OHM is also the ones that did our study for the sewer, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Flooding. So what we're doing here for the residents is we're spending money to make sure that the rest of the body that we have, the $24.8 million is being put into proper use, implemented, it's also designed, but it's also implementation as well?
Yes, sir, Council President, that's exactly what this phase is.
Okay. And I know from when you were here before and for and down stuff, situations regarding projects this size, is it normal to have these type of, these type of design engineering consultants?
Absolutely. And I worked on Woodward Avenue, the road diet there. This is, this is a process that we're following. Certainly, this is a much larger amount of resource that we have this time to be able to do this project more holistically, but absolutely, this is probably the most important phase, getting the design right before you go out to construction bids. So who you partner with truly matters.
Absolutely. And Councilman Abraham, I want you to remember this, and I don't want to go back in the past, but we had a council member that was really, really a good friend to all of us, and would say, hope is a bad plan.
That's right.
So this is not hope. And we have, we received as much money as the city of Detroit, and in fact, I believe we were the second highest or the...
I think we were tied, sir, yes.
Tied for the largest.
Yes.
In the state, right, in the federal grant.
Yes.
So it's a big deal for Warren Avenue. It's well-needed, and I think it's going to be tremendous. So the plan is important, folks, and that's, this is the first part of it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Director Torri.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing on, unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 24, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Enos, awarding a contract to JLL Valuation and Advisory Services in the amount of $34,000 for our hotel market analysis, also authorizing the Finance Director to recognize and appropriate the Visit Detroit grant funding in the amount of $10,000 in the General Capital Improvement Fund and Project B25000, and it's the hotel market analysis, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The City of Dearborn aims to support midtown Dearborn's growth by revitalizing the Fairlane Mall area. The Economic Development Department requests approval to award a contract for a hotel market analysis to assess the feasibility of reopening the former High Regency at 700 Town Center Drive as a high-level hotel convention center. Visit Detroit has committed $10,000 to analyze, towards this, to analyze through a local grant, and the department seeks council's authorization to accept and allocate this grant. Purchasing on behalf of Economic Development Department recommends the award of contract to hotel marketing analysis to JLL Valuation and Advisory Services as a one-time purchase cost of $34,000 and is requesting immediate effect. This is similar to the last project where we're having our downtown. We have some condominiums, new food truck park, and trying to build up that area as a midtown area in the city of Dearborn. So this is another planning and utilizing award that we have as well. Any questions or comments? All right, any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 25, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud, awarding a contract to key construction company in the amount of $252,170 for comfort station upgrades at city parks, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. For the first time in over 25 years, the comfort stations at Hemlock and Fort Worth Park, as well as the shelter at Hemlock Park, are receiving much-needed upgrades. Crowley Park Comfort Station will also receive upgrades. These requested upgrades will provide necessary repairs to restore optimal function to each location. The repairs range from cosmetic work to ensuring the properly functioning plumbing and electrical. The requested amount for these projects is $252,170, and the Parks and Recreation Department, in conjunction with purchasing, recommends issuing a contract for the comfort station upgrades to key construction company, and immediate effect is being requested. And we did ask for information. I know we did receive some of the photos of the current condition, so we do appreciate that. Any questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 26, resolution by councilmembers Elsawafi and Herrick, authorizing the Fire Department to conduct the annual Dearborn Firefighters Fill the Boot fundraiser drive from November 10th through November 16th, 2024, throughout the city of Dearborn for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Dearborn Fire Department Fill the Boot fundraiser drive has long, been a longstanding charitable drive undertaken by the firefighters, and has always been very successful in obtaining much-needed finance assistance for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, or MDA. Our fire, Dearborn firefighters are requesting permission to place themselves in various locations throughout the city to collect donations in their fire boots for the MDA. Firefighters shall follow all equitable laws and ordinances as required for donation collections on public roads and wear safety vests to ensure visibility. The fundraiser drive will take place on November 6th through November 11th of this year, 2024, and immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this? Chief? All right.
Good evening, Council, Fire Chief Joe Stamer. I just, I believe the dates that you just mentioned were incorrect. It's going to be November 10th through the 16th.
Oh, okay.
So I extended over.
Mr. Clerk, do you have that?
I have the 10th through the 16th, yes.
Okay, so mine is incorrect. I had six through the, okay, I apologize. So thank you for letting me know. Let me just make sure I get it right. So for the residents, again, November, thank you, Chief, November 10th through the 16th.
Yes.
And I know you'll be, you'll be out there.
I will be out there.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that clarification, and just for everyone out there, again, November 10th through the 16th. Well, you can't miss them, they'll be in the middle of the street with a boot. So you see them, but whatever you can, help support, appreciate it. Any questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 27, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Paris, accepting the State of Michigan's Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Turnout Gear Grant in the amount of $497,000, and authorizing the Finance Director to recognize and appropriate revenue in the amount of $497,000 in the General Capital Improvement Fund. Fire Department Project X02525, also authorizing a sole-source contract purchase from Phoenix Safety Outfitters in the amount of $546,980 for the purchase of firefighter turnout gear, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Dearborn Fire Department recently applied for a State of Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, or LEO, grant for firefighter turnout gear. The Dearborn Fire Department was awarded $497,000 for this project. There is no local match for this grant, however, the Fire Department is requesting the council to add an additional $50,000 from the general fund for Fire Department accounts to purchase additional turnout gear, helmets, boots, as needed to keep up with all the members' safety for their PPE replacement cycle. This funding will utilize, will be used, used to utilize turnout gear that is worn by firefighters during their fire suppression and fire rescue operations. Total cost of the purchase is $546,980, and the Fire Department is requesting immediate effect on this request to ensure compliance with grant timelines. And Chief, I know that this is another grant that you wrote this time, or is it the Grant Department?
I wrote this one.
All right. I want to make sure. Keep track.
It wasn't as difficult as some of the other ones, but this is a grant by the State of Michigan. It's actually kind of, it's a one-off grant that they, they're putting out there with the attempt of getting all firefighters a second set of turnout gear as part of the cancer prevention. So we have the ability to wash our gear, and have another set of gear to change into. So it was a grant put out by the State of Michigan, we put in for it. Unfortunately, we, they cut about 15 sets of gear out of our requests, so that's what the additional funding is for, so that all of our members could have a new set of gear and some boots, just to keep us on the cycle, our rhythm cycle, so we're not off and mixed matched.
Absolutely. And then, Chief, this is being used not only for the fires, but that's, is that what they use when they're on the run for accidents and so on and so forth?
Yeah.
Is that, just for layman, the turnout gear consists of how many pieces? I mean, is it the gloves hat, the helmet, the hole?
Yeah, it's the, what's getting funded from the grant is the coat and the pants, and then we do have some additional funds in there for the boots and gloves, some of them that are coming up on their expiration, so.
Right. And what you're indicating, too, this is really on the line of health as well, which we've been doing this in health and all policies and so on and so forth. What's, what you're saying, too, is by having a second, a set, the first set can be cleaned properly while the second set is in use in a rotation aspect, which you haven't had this in the past.
Yes, well, we've had second sets of gear for Dearborn for a number of years now. We've kind of, we're ahead of the curve on that. But this, we are actually up for replacement next year, so this came out a little bit early for us, so, but it's obviously some free money for us. So worked out, worked out well, timing-wise. We already have the specs, we have everyone measured, we're ready to go as soon as the council approves, and we also have some new extractors to clean our turnout gear we got on the last grant, so we're...
Excellent. So we're ready to go.
Really focused on the cancer prevention these days.
Absolutely, Chief. So Councilman Enos, you have something to add?
Yeah, one question. Chief, what is your grant money total up to nowadays?
I was keeping track, Gary. I don't know. I lost it. Let's see if you've got it.
About, I'm about 30 million since I've made chief, one and a half this year.
Are you still keeping track? Are you still keeping track?
Too much to keep track of.
No, Chief, we do appreciate it. I've said many times, you know, in the past, before the mayor and the administration brought in the Grant Department, you were a grant writer, and it does matter. I mean, folks, that's, that's your tax dollars, it's just who could get it back to you where it's supposed to be. So we do appreciate it. It does help them. Every time we can get some of that, it gives us more, more funding to do with other things and improve our roads and improve other aspects of the residents, so we do appreciate it very much.
And it is, it is a team effort.
Absolutely.
Sally, always, she's a great, great resource. If it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be able to write all these, because the amount of reporting and paperwork we have to do to keep up with them is tremendous, so shout out to Sally for giving a great job.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 28, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Abraham, granting the request of the Dearborn Police Officers Charities to conduct their annual Sergeant Chris Hampton Memorial 5K Run on Sunday, October 27th, 2024, beginning at 9:00 AM at Ford Field, with temporary road closures of the curb lane on Brady Street, and assistance from the Dearborn Police Department for traffic safety and crowd control for the entire duration of the event, subject to reimbursement for city services and certain stipulations. Also authorizing a noise waiver for the duration of the event, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Sergeant Chris Hampton Memorial 5K Run is scheduled for Sunday, October 27th, at Ford Field, at 9:00 AM start time. The event aims to raise awareness for suicide prevention while raising funds for the Chris Hampton Memorial. The Dearborn Police Department will assist with traffic control during the event as needed, and immediate effect is being requested. Chief?
Good evening. Eesu Shaheen, Police Chief. I've written zero grand dollars since I started. So as you know, this is in support of Chris Hampton, who tragically took his own life while on the job. It's to raise awareness for suicide prevention. I will be running in the event, Mayor, so I encourage others to come out. Yeah, Council President?
5K?
Yeah, hold your applause.
I want to get the video team there. You make sure we have a video on that one.
I will be, I will be there, and I encourage people to come out. It's a, it's kind of a somber event, but at the same time...
It is a somber.
It's nice to get people together and kind of speak about it, so.
We do appreciate it, and all the traffic issues, because, you know, I live in that neighborhood.
I know you do, sir.
They come to my house, tell me I can't get out.
It'll be minimal, I can assure you that. Thank you.
No, definitely, sir. Great call, so we do appreciate it, Chief. Again, Sunday, October 27th, at Ford Field, 9:00 AM.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Chief, you might not write a lot of grants, but your videos are the best out there in the whole department, so I just wanted to know that.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
You got it. All right, unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 29, resolution by Council President Serini, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Tim Stacy, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Timothy Tim Stacy was born on October 28th, 1969, in Wyandotte, Michigan, sadly passed away on October 1st, 2024, at the young age of 54. Tim is the chair of son of James and Betty, the beloved husband of Maya, and the loving father of three wonderful daughters, Ava, Emma, and Lily. Tim was the dear brother of Lisa, Anderson, and Jennifer, the adored son-in-law of Rajah Naze, and the deepest brother-in-law, and, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and the brother-in-law and the brother-in-law as well of Rana, Sakuro, and Lena Bazey. Tim was also idolized by his nieces, nephews, Evan, Owen, Charlotte, Zana, and Eli. He had many respected friends and leaders in the Dearborn community. In May of '22, Tim retired from the Dearborn Police as a sergeant after 22 years of service in the community, with dedication curves in distinction, leaving a legacy of service that will not be forgotten. He was a man of remarkable strength, integrity, and unwavering devotion to his family and his faith. Above all, it was Tim's role as a loving husband and father that truly defined him. He was so proud and blessed to have the support of his wife and his three beautiful daughters, and to, and in turn, the love for them was boundless. He deeply shares his family and took great pride in what he and his wife built together. His devotion grounded in strong faith was a guide and light. Even in difficult times, his faith gave him the strength to be with his family, to be his family's rock, and now, and know that his faith will carry him home. Though words cannot heal the pain, may memories bring comfort along with the love that he shared, the love that he shared, and the belief that now he's in God's grace. Tim's spirit will always remain a reminder of his strength and love and enduring faith. When I took office in 2014, Tim was assigned as a neighborhood liaison, and he was always a pleasure to work with. Whenever I needed any help with residents, he handled the situation with the utmost respect, kindness, and was effective in resolving all the issues for the residents. We offer our deep gratitude for the many acts of kindness Tim shared with the community. Our heartfelt sincere sympathy and condolences go out to his friends and family and all those who cared for him. May his soul rest in peace. And the unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item thirty, resolution by Council President Serini, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Donald Moran and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Donald H. Moran was born in Detroit on November 16, 1960, and passed away peacefully in Dearborn on October 10, 2024, at the age of 63. He was a beloved husband of Renee and devoted father of five children, Rachel, Michelle, Romeo, Donnie, Natalie, and Steven, along with three cherished grandchildren, Michael, Lana, Ophelia. Don lived a, Don lived a life filled with dedication and service and love. As a reserve officer for the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, Don exemplified courage, integrity, and a deep sense of duty to his community. As a proud Teamster, his values of hard work and solidarity shine through in all areas of his life. At the heart of it all, Don's greatest devotion was to his family. His love, support, and unwavering commitment to his life, children, and grandchildren defined his life. He was also a mentor, a coach impacting many young lives with his patience, leadership, and passion, teaching lessons that went well beyond the field. In my own experience of coaching Dearborn Lions Little League alongside Don in the early 2000s, I witnessed firsthand his incredible dedication to the youth that he mentored. His ability to connect with the kids and teach them not just the game, but the valuable life lessons was truly inspiring. Don's patience and encouragement created a positive environment where every child felt valued and supported. I feel fortunate to have shared those moments with him, and his influence on my coaching journey is something that I always carry with me. Don's kindness, generosity, and loyalty touched everyone he knew. Though this loss is deeply felt, his legacy of love, strength will forever live on the hearts of his family, friends, and the community. We extend our heartfelt condolences and sympathy to Coach Don and his family and friends. May his soul rest in eternal peace. And the unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item thirty-one, resolution by Council President Pro Tem Herrick, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Margaret Schaefer and requesting immediate effect.
Margaret E. Schaefer, a longtime, lifelong resident of Dearborn, was born February 25, 1938, and sadly passed away on October 10, 2024, at the age of 86. Margaret was the beloved mother to Chris Schaefer and husband Andy Garanich, Julie and husband Jackson Schaefer, Gail and husband Bill Edwards, and Greg and wife Andrea Schaefer. She was the proud grandmother of eight grandchildren and the adored great-grandmother to six beautiful great-grandchildren. We have deep sorrows. We honor the life of Margaret, a remarkable woman who touched many lives in Dearborn, in the Dearborn community and beyond through her unwavering dedication, generosity, and kindness. She was an educator with the Dearborn Public Schools, where she was a beacon of inspiration to countless students, nurturing their minds and shaping their futures with her wisdom and compassion. Margaret's contribution to education will be forever remembered by those who had the privilege to work with her and learn from, work alongside her and learn from her. Margaret's philanthropy knew no bounds. For example, wherever she went, she was always knitting caps for service people to wear under their caps in their uniforms. As a devoted board member of the Dearborn Symphony and a passionate supporter of the Wounded Warrior Project, she championed, championed causes close to her heart. Through her tireless volunteering with local charities, she uplifted the lives of many, always finding ways to give back to the Dearborn community she loved so dearly. Margaret's kindness, wit, and generosity were a source of hope and comfort to all who knew her. Through the Dearborn Symphony, she also chaired their youth scholarship program, which presented scholarships to dozens and dozens of students over the years to nurture and encourage their love of music and promote their talents, some of who went on to become professional musicians. Beyond her charitable work, Margaret was a woman of great adventure. As an avid traveler, she explored the world with a sense of wonder and enthusiasm that was infectious. She embraced life fully from the bathrooms of Dearborn to the ski slopes as a member of the Ford Thunderbird Ski Club, always finding joy in every journey. Margaret's legacy is one of profound compassion, strength, and dedication to helping others. She leaves behind a community forever enriched by her presence, and she will be deeply missed. May her family and friends find peace and comfort in knowing that her life was one of purpose, love, and selfless service. To all, we offer our most heartfelt sympathy and sincere condolences.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Nothing further from the clerk this evening. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, thank you. So I'm going to open up myself for the council. I did have the chief here. Chief, yeah. I wanted a couple of things we're going to talk about. I know we did mention some PSA announcements. And I wanted to make sure we had some background for our residents regarding door-to-door solicitation, as many have seen a person that poses a DTE person and broke into a house and so on and so forth, which added, ended in a tragic death. And I know, Chief, we talked, I mean, myself, I got cameras, I look out the door. We talk to our kids. But I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to explain to the residents that what we have in Dearborn as far as ordinances and what they can do and what cannot be done. So I know that Corporal Baltoc, under your direction, put out a video PSA this morning. But if you'd like to speak a little bit about it and the things that you are working on and then what we talked about as far as the ordinance as well.
Sure. Thank you, Council President Issa Shaheen, Police Chief. So the solicitation ordinance in the City of Dearborn makes the distinction between non-commercial solicitation and commercial solicitation. So non-commercial solicitation would be someone that comes to your door for religious purposes or has, you know, Save the Whales or something like that. They would not need to pull a permit from the city clerk, and they do not need to have a license with them in their possession when they come to your door. Now, you contrast that against solicitation for commercial reasons. That would be someone that is trying to get money, solicit donations, sell Kirby vacuums. They would need to get a license from the clerk, and they would need to be in possession of that license when they come to your door. Now, one way that a resident could avoid someone coming to their door would be posting a no solicitation sign or no trespassing sign. If someone was to knock on your door with that, regardless of their purpose, whether it was commercial or non-commercial, they'd be in violation of the law, and you could call the police if they knocked on your door. So I'd encourage residents that don't want to have or have to deal with people knocking on their door to put those signs up. And then finally, I would encourage people, if they don't know who's at their door, to talk to them through the door, have a peephole, and just be careful, right, when people are knocking on your door. Don't let any strangers into your home for any reason. If anyone tells you they need to check the water temperature, the gas, or whatever it may be, please don't open the door for them.
Thank you, Chief. I thought that was important to highlight. Like I said, I know we talked. Our kids are close in age. I guess some older than yours and some younger too, so.
Sure.
I agree with you totally because I also had young men knock on the door, and I said, "You guys have a permit?" They didn't know, they didn't have, they didn't have a permit. And they were selling some cable or satellite. So for the residents to understand, just to clarify again, best way to do it, and there's not a specific language, just no soliciting. They can write it themselves, correct?
Yeah, no solicitation and no trespassing as well. I'd encourage them to put both of them up. So there's no confusion.
And they can put it on their door, and that means that no one's allowed in there. And if they do come, you can call the non-emergency police number.
I would actually encourage folks, if they have any concerns, to just dial 911.
I'm sorry, Mayor?
No, political is allowed.
Political is allowed, yeah.
If you have the sign, is it allowed?
No.
No.
No. If they have a sign that says no trespassing, no solicitation, I'm under the impression, Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, that they're not supposed to be knocking on their doors.
I think it's allowed.
You do?
It is allowed.
Okay.
As an avid canvasser. Politics is not solicitation. And so they can still knock on your door because they're not selling anything. They're asking for a vote. It is 100% permitted, even with your no solicitation sticker. As a previous candidate, I tend to note your door and knock, knock. Doesn't know you personally.
It's out of respect, right.
Correct.
But again, we're not trying to give the criminals another way to get in.
Yeah, I know.
This is an information for the residents to understand.
It gets confusing, doesn't it?
It does, no, it does get confusing, and that's why I asked you to come up. That's why I asked Legal to send this stuff and your department to be aware of it and to spread it through. So best thing is no soliciting sign. And I do agree with the chief, with the mayor, but if you, as a canvasser, as a political candidate, knock on a door where someone specifically says no soliciting, the chance of you getting the vote there is pretty slim to none. That's number one. Because you disrespected what they wanted. So that's number one. So I never do it. I tell our people if they see no soliciting. But again, again, there is a difference in Dearborn. So if someone is trying to sell something that they don't have a permit on their hand, that is illegal in Dearborn, and you can contact the non-emergency police number. But again, folks, this is for safety. You know, many of us have people in the household. Someone opens the door, don't even look, you know. You know, I've been fortunate enough, Chief, that I've trained, you know, the kids know. They, they won't open the door hardly at all. So that's a good, it's a good thing. There's reasons for it. I mean, it's an unfortunate situation. One person was, lost its life, the other person was.
The one thing I'd add also, just dial 911 if there's any confusion.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you're fine doing that as well.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I highlighted that. Councilman Paris?
If I could, on the same subject, does the city or the police department hand out any of those no handbills, no solicitation signs to put on your door? Because I know they used to. The O'Reilly administration did it. And administrations.
So I think that's a great idea, and we'll definitely be acquiring some of those and we'll make it available to residents to put on their doors.
Yeah, I didn't know if it came from the police department before or the.
You used to be able to download them.
We've got them at the clerk's office. We've passed them out quite a bit the last couple of weeks.
There we go.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. You pass them out a couple of weeks right before the election, so I guess that means they don't want them to knock on the door for politics. All right, well, thank you, Chief.
Thank you for that.
In a serious note, I think the safety and security is the utmost importance for the government and for the residents. And anything that we could do to help limit those situations is very important.
Thank you for talking.
Thank you, Chief. All right, I just had a couple of other things. We have a couple, I don't know how this happened. It came back on me the last council. I think I was doing this too. But we have a couple of birthdays. So I'd like to shout them out on here. Councilman Enos? October 16, happy birthday, brother. And my, what do I call you? Alumni, legal alumni from the same school, Mr. Romer. You have a birthday coming up. I always, I always like to recognize those. Happy birthday. Happy birthday. Absolutely. Next, I'd like to open up to my colleagues, if they have anything relating to city business. Councilman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. First, I would like to say thank you to the Recreation Department and the administration for the third year of an amazing haunted trail at Ford Field Park. The mayor may have been planning to talk about this, but I spent quite a bit of time down there this weekend. And shout out to Rashid Badun and the students involved in the Dearborn Youth Theater Program. Because if you went and saw a person or saw some of the videos online of the Michael Jackson Thriller dance that they did, people were amazed at how talented these young people are in the costumes and the lighting. Martin Zaboznik and the recreation in the theater and his staff did an outstanding job giving a wonderful experience to thousands and thousands of people. And the mayor probably knows exactly how many thousands. What was it?[1338.81]
Just, Alex, 100,000.
No, I don't think it was quite 100,000, but everybody enjoyed themselves. I talked to some of the people who had come from other cities. For $10, you couldn't beat the value. It was so professionally done. And when you think about haunted houses in other cities, I'm so proud of Dearborn and that everybody comes here and has a good time, a safe time for Halloween. So thank you to the Recreation Department for putting that on. Second, I wanted to say thank you to the Dearborn Police Department. I see our chief has, is sporting a pink patch on his shoulder for this month. It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and good reminder to women, it's time to make sure you have that exam on your calendars and that you go for a checkup. And for anybody who's battled cancer or is a survivor, thank you for your courage and the example that you set for others. Thirdly, I'd like to mention that this weekend, in addition to the police department's run on Sunday morning, at 10:00 a.m. at Crowley Park on Sunday, the fire department, some of the firefighters are going to be participating in our local Walk for the Red, and there'll be a track with some stations that you can stop at along the way. What Walk for the Red is, is a cancer fundraising support for cancer, firefighters who are battling cancer. Firefighters have a higher incidence rate of cancer than the general population because of the dangers that they walk into and risk their lives for the people, the families, and the businesses here in Dearborn and around the world. And this Walk for the Red is a good way to show our support of them and their families when they are undergoing cancer treatment. And it's kind of a fun day because people have been encouraged to dress up if they want with their families to walk the track, and they're walking, they've got sponsors who are walking for how many laps that they do. They just raise funds for cancer, for the Walk for the Red. And that was it. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Herrick. Councilman Enos?
Yeah. Just want to shout out to the Elsaford Boys Soccer Team for winning the district championship this past Friday night.
Oh, excellent.
They beat the University of Forts.
Uh-oh. Well, it's okay. It is a soccer school. We're not a soccer school at Forts. We do appreciate that. Any other one from the council? I have anything? All right. Mayor and administration, anything from you?
To Councilwoman Herrick's point, the Haunted Trail was extremely successful. We did have a one issue. It was at the track or treat, and we had a person passing out toothpaste. It was actually Councilwoman.
There were parents who were very appreciative. The kids did get candy from me as well.
My daughter went home, she's like, what the heck is this? And I was just like, I'm not sure. I don't know. Just keep that top of mind as we head into 2025.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you to Malta Dental. It's a nonprofit organization clinic in Detroit. And Nancy Harmon, who is a resident here in Dearborn, is manager of that clinic. She donated toothbrushes and toothpaste. And I actually had kids who had missed because I didn't give out the toothpaste the whole time, but kids that came back and asked for the toothpaste. They said, we really love brushing with us because it tastes good.
You know, as a father of two, I haven't heard that yet. But I'm gonna take your word for it. I think overall, the Haunted Trail saw about 10,000 people, which is phenomenal. We did well on revenue. We'll share the financials once we have it all done. I think this just sets the precedent that, you know, we can take on new experiences and challenges within the city. We obviously have brilliant minds like Martin Zaboznik, Rashid Badun, our whole parks and rec staff, and when they work collectively together, they come up with amazing ideas. And so to all the youth in the Dearborn Youth Theater Club also, they did a phenomenal job. So hats off to all of them. And then the second thing is, we're probably like a week away from Crowley Park being completed. I actually got to walk it with my two daughters. I had them exploring it with Panchura, who's on site, before the servicing got poured. And my daughter's already asking about it each day, like, when's that new park going to be open? And so the inclusive play-in pour was actually poured in. We're watching it 24 hours around the clock because we can't have anybody step on it while it's poured. But it's, we're probably a week out from actually having a soft opening, and then we'll plan the grand opening. But it's going to be super exciting to have the first inclusive playscape in the city of Dearborn in that neighborhood. So just wanted to make that announcement as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Clark?
Well, I have to mention that there's something happening in a couple of weeks that we should all be aware of. I think Mr. Benzek mentioned it earlier. It's a huge election for our country, for our state, and in Dearborn. We're expecting a big crowd. I want to let you know that the clerk's office and our staff are ready for the big one, as we call it. It could be the most people ever voting in the city of Dearborn for any election. We're expecting close to 50,000 possible people altogether, including the absentee voters. We've got about 12,000 absentee ballots that are out. About 51% have been returned. That's a little bit on the low side, so we're expecting a lot to happen in the next two weeks. We expect most of those absentee ballots to be returned to us. We have early voting that starts this Saturday at the Community Arts Center. That'll be nine to five, nine days in a row. So those of you that don't want to come out on Election Day, this might be a tip from your clerk. That might be a good place to go to vote, since I'm expecting more than 30,000 people to show up on Election Day. Compare that to 7,000 that we had in August. We're looking at more than four times the amount of people coming out on Election Day. We're not sure what the weather's going to be, of course, but we'll be ready for them. I want to thank the mayor and allowing me to have a conversation with him about our needs, and he has agreed to allow some, if not most, of his department heads to help us out on this election, which we greatly appreciate, not only before the election, but actually on Election Day. They're going to help us navigate through anything that could possibly happen on Election Day, and I really thank the cooperation that we're receiving from the city. It means a lot to me and my staff to know that we've got backup and that we'll be, we'll be all right on Election Day.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And then first, thank you, Mr. Clerk. And then for staffing and volunteering or staffing for that day, are you already all set?
Yeah. You know what? If somebody's interested in working on Election Day, either at the polls or even at night on a receiving team, the receiving board, we still have some more openings that we can fill if anybody's interested in doing that.
And how much do you get paid for that, George?
So on Election Day, the Election Commission thankfully increased the pay. So we're going to be paying $270. That's including the training for Election Day, and $100 on Election Night, since that's only like a five-hour commitment at night.
Which is great.
No, that's tremendous. So how would somebody, I got a kid sent at home, I sent him there for two hours.
Flyers are being posted on social media to advertise how you can reach out. If you just reach out to the clerk's department, you can get a contact with George.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great thing. But I know you have great staff there, but I know, like you said, this is going to be a bigger election, so you need more people in there.
Yep.
All right. So they can reach out to the clerk's staff around the website, Mayor?
Correct. Yeah. Just to double down on what George was saying, we absolutely need residents to vote. I know there's, trust me, we've been at the center of many a conversation for the last year, and if there's anything I can, you know, any words of wisdom to offer, sitting at home is not going to resolve anything. But participating, especially for local offices, we have many local offices around the ballot this upcoming election, including the school board. And so start with your local offices and work your way up. And when you get to the top, obviously make the decision that's most comfortable for you. But please, sitting at home is not going to resolve anything. We want to demonstrate high turnout. There's so many ways, and morgues have so many ways to vote now. You have the early voting options, it'll be the gymnasium, no reason, any reason absentee voting. And so, God willing, we can increase turnout and continue that trend across the city of Dearborn.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
I answered.
You want to answer? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And then there's one other method of dropping off your ballots. If you have an absentee ballot, there are four drop boxes across the city. They're secure, and they are located at the, behind the Dearborn Administrative Center, where we are right now, at Levagood Park in the parking lot. And then what are the other two?
Three are Crowley Park, Hemlock, and Lepire.
Okay.
And those are all statutory, as far as there are video cameras on them, they're monitored and so on. So they're very safe.
Yes.
And then the mayor also mentioned that there's going to be communications going out from the communications staff. The website is going to have more information about making it easier to vote, where to get, where you can go and drop the ballots, things like that. So keep an eye on the city's website and social media channels in the next couple of weeks. And yes, everybody needs to get out and vote, because as the mayor said, sitting home's not an answer. If you don't vote, you've given your vote to someone else. You've given away that power, and your vote is your voice when it comes to local elected officials. The school board is here in Dearborn, they're up for election. There are judges that impact our community that are up for election, and then, of course, the national elections. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. At this time, Mr. Clerk, we will go into our second and final public comment section. Again, this is unlimited public comment time, again, for each person. It's a three-minute limitation. Per resident, there's comment cards, and if you don't want to fill one out, you can just raise and be recognized by myself. We'll have you come up. So is there anyone here would like to address the city council regarding city business? You do? Yeah, okay. Come forward. That's okay. Absolutely. That works too.
It's city business.
So the library is also getting into the, oh, sorry, library director, Betty Adams. Thank you. The library's also getting into the fun of elections and allowing for youth to vote for their favorite, if it is they love dog books or cat books. Inside of the Henry Ford Centennial Library, visit the youth service desk, and they have the characters, who are the prime candidates for each party, and they are welcome to vote, and they get a "I voted" sticker with the animal on there, as well as, you know, vote for cats or vote for dogs. So a very fun opportunity from one of our newest members of our team being presented this year, and we're very excited to see the results, and we'll share those with you as well.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. Anyone else here would like to address the city council? All right. Hearing and seeing none, I close the public comment. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We are adjourned. Councilman Habou.